Okay, at 6 o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and open the meeting. And at this time, I'm gonna ask our clerk to do the roll call.
Okay, Josh, Mitzi, Rodney, Dennis, Kristy and Trevor.
I'd like to welcome the visitors here tonight. I appreciate y'all coming to our council meeting. And we need more people coming in, but we really appreciate the ones that are here, okay? I'd like to welcome Josh Colwell. This is his first council meeting.
Y'all forgive me, I've got my training wheels on.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna ask Jeremy Harris, our pastor here, a live church, to lead us in prayer for opening the meeting.
Let's pray. Dear God, we just come before you in Jesus' name. Father, we just want to thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity we have. Father, I just pray, God, over this town. God, I pray over the leaders of this town and this council, Father, that they continue to strive and move forward. Father, I pray, God, that you just help them make the best decisions, God, according to your will, and let this town follow. God, I just pray blessings over everyone that is here tonight. And, God, we just want to give you all the praise and honor and glory for all that you've done and all that you're going to do for us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeremy. At this time, we're gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask that we approve the financials for April. I think you've been given copies of the financials. We got the bank statements, add a profit and loss that was done by the clerk. Also got a balance of all the accounts in the general fund, all the other accounts that we have. We got the general fund statement from the bank for the meeting on April 30. We also have one for the senior center account, and we have one for the police, Father, special.
Before we go in further, and we vote, do we need to swear, Josh?
It's our decision.
Oh, yes?
They did it at their convenience. Here in town. So we did it. Warren's Rowell, no, Warren's Rowell did that.
Okay, that's fine, I love it. Congratulations on Josh, I didn't know.
One of those things where they say, "We didn't do it."
Are we approving the April?
Yeah, let's tell them order. Yeah, like, April. The first one was...
Mitzi McLeary is here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I jumped over somebody, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Nancy McLeary is here to talk to us. She wanted to be able to attend and talk to us by the garden club. So I asked her to come, and at this time, Nancy will turn it over to you to...
I'm just trying to keep it on you.
Wherever you went to, right there, you did.
I made copies for April. I don't know if you read it yourself or not. We had, basically, we were just trying to, you know, our garden club is rather, well, we don't have as many members as we normally have. Our fundraisers have not been really good in the past, so we were just trying to see if we could maybe get some money allocated to us. The containers that we have purchased, you know, some of them are just, have been backed over, some of these kind of ones, and you have different things. But we're trying to put those around the city and, you know, try to just beautify the city. And what we do is, we put flowers in them, normally in the spring, and then again in fall. And we had some solar lights that were in them too that were also stolen, so. Anyway, we like to replace the containers. I feel like they need to be a significant size to be able to see them, and I've tried to find where them. $50 to $200 as far as, but I haven't got enough amount on those.
How many containers do you have?
There's 16. Two of them are concrete. They've been here for a while. One of them is from the rock building, not the rock store, but the rock building, with the car wash and the clay, place, containers. There's one there that's concrete that's been there for a long time, obviously. With the containers, we purchase the soil and all this stuff, you know, the fertilizer and everything that comes in too, so. And the other thing we do is, we maintain, or we pay someone to maintain the signs. I know Rodney keeps his mode at his house, but the one on 46, going towards Hethland, we also did that big retaining wall, put plants in that and everything. And then the other one, at State Line, we maintain that. We take Bill Light, he does it, I think, twice a month, and we pay him $25 per cut. And that kind of adds up, you know, for the year. And then we also cut the historical marker in front of the State Line grocery store too. So we've had a good many expenses and want to continue to, you know, grow and beautify and just include the city in what we can, so.
It always looks good.
I'm sorry?
It always looks good.
What's your vision? How many new ones do you need? If you had 16 and something?
Well, if we had more than 16, obviously, we could put them more places, but we just, we kind of came up with that number because we bought them and we got, kind of got a deal on them, actually, and we went ahead and bought all they had, so that's kind of where we got them. I mean, 16 is just a number. We could do, we could double that as far as putting them in different places. I know they've got some that, up at the senior center, that are on the outside, but I don't know what's happened with the ones we bought that just been damaged. One in front of the bank, there's, it's got dead plants in it now, and it looks, it's just a nice shore, so we need to at least take that one out and get rid of it.
Do we have something, do we have a fund that is for, am I remembering that correctly? That is, it's not for like, maintain and beautification, but?
Well, anytime, I don't think so. I hope we've ever had that. You know, anytime we allocate money, it has to be go through a public process. We have to allocate, and this is coming from our attorney, we have to have a hearing. Anytime we appropriate money from tax return money, it has to have, and that's usually not a big deal because part of it, I would come to it anyway, but it's just a procedure we have to do. And once that is done, then we can go forward with whatever amount you think that you might need.
Well, we're not, we don't exactly have a dollar in mind, we're just, we just appreciate whatever. I mean, if it's, you know, if it's $100, if it's, you know, whatever, we definitely appreciate what you can do. Definitely use it for the city.
Would it not be one or capital improvement? What is that specifically?
It has to be, well, anytime you appropriate money, going back to that.
Yeah, I just mean which fund, I know what procedure we have to go through, but?
It would come out of the general fund. Unless, unless they were some other fund, if we did it, now, it could come out of capital improvement, you know, I'll tell you. But the capital improvement is for maintaining the building, that kind of stuff. That's the way I saw it. Now, we had, we did have a promotional account.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, promotional, but I think it's not there no more. It could be, I don't know.
I think put it in the general or whatever.
At one point, you had a beautification fund. But that was, from what I'm seeing, was back in 2003. So I'm sure you've seen, I mean, I don't know how far it got, when it was closed or anything, but I bet that's what you're thinking about.
So if we wanted to do this, we would go through the same procedures we did with donating to the red department?
Mm-hmm, yes. That's the same thing we did. You know, we had a meeting, we had to have a public hearing, and then after that, we're through.
Which is really not, it's not a big deal.
It's really, it's really one big deal.
We can just throw it out there in the downtown, at least we can do the city's gift some to it. How often do y'all, 'cause I was looking at the one coming in from Georgia, and I actually started just going around trimming around on the hedges myself.
Yeah, we trim, we trim them twice a year, but we do it ourselves. We don't hire it. We would like to hire it now, but we have to do that ourselves. And we try to do that twice a year, and we do the funds draw. But they're in need of trimming because we haven't done it. We usually do it in the spring, and we've not done it this year. We've had some members that were sick, and actually, the president of the garden club, her husband had a stroke, and she's, she can't like him, so she didn't figure. So the ones of us that can get out and work, you know, we try to schedule it and do it spring and fall. But we've not been able to do it this spring yet, but we will.
I'm willing to help, solid.
It's down by the ones that aren't.
Is there any, is there any type of tax number that's associated with that, where, like, any businesses could get to it and get up?
She's our treasure, so. Y'all got any questions?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Nancy, because we really appreciate what you did for our town.
I appreciate that, and I'm going to.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, well, now we can jump down to what I started on, double check that. Well, approval of Nancy's April meeting. So we got on the toilet slat at 10:00, I believe it was. Just to look for two of them?
Yeah, I need to know.
Have we done anything about the roof? Did we get a bid or not? We need to get some bids.
Well, the guy, I talked with Wesley, Wesley Bowden. Wesley said that he would do it for $1,000 to do the roof up there, and he's done that, okay? He's already done that. All right. After that, there was still a small leak up there, and I got Jeremy to get up there and look, and we got, there's one screw that's out, and it's coming through the thing, and there's no insulation, there's nothing underneath that roof right there. It's just straight old slats. It'd be real easy to miss one of those slats, and I think that's the problem. And he told me he was gonna get somebody to come out here and do it. I have a talk to him to find out if he's done that or not, but he's already fixed the roof.
Okay, so this fixed then?
Yes. Let's make a follow-up.
What about the heating and air above the place? Did they kind of fix that?
I have no idea.
Same doing that?
The heating in the air unit?
Yeah, by the police car.
Yes, we're good. We're good on it. It was, the, there was a, in the pan, it wasn't draining. Like, it was stopped, but it was just overflowing, which is what's caused the hole in the roof back there. That's where we need to go with this, like, if we need to fix that hole.
In the police car? Is that from the water leaking out, Nancy won't say?
But we have not, we hadn't noticed it, I mean, I did, I looked, but we hadn't noticed it leaking out.
And then, let betters, did they buy the crown pink for $300?
They have not given me a check on the check, but they said he would. Matter of fact, I got a check from Governor Chris, that's probably what he wants to talk to me about.
And then did Bear, Bear view, hey? Decide what to do with the old police car?
Well, from talking to Barry, Barry, you own Steve's old car.
Last time I talked to Mason, he asked me what I wanted to do, and I told him to, I had told him to fix the seat and the mirror, but he said he was gonna do it whenever he got a chance. I hadn't heard nothing about you.
And then creatures, did they ever get that key? Okay, so the holidays for the town employees, it says that we were gonna discuss it in the work session, but we didn't have a work session. Or we're gonna discuss that tonight to address the holidays? Because we do have several holidays coming up, like, we just had one yesterday, and so.
That's picked up. If you want, if you want to do that, we can do it. And that's not on the agenda, but if you want to discuss that, we can discuss that right here.
I mean, I'm just going, I'm just kind of rehashing what's on here, what we're gonna do. It doesn't matter for me, but we have another, we won't have another, we won't have another holiday before the next meeting, so.
Yeah, we will.
Oh, yeah, the June 10th.
The what now?
June 10th.
But I think they took that, I think they took that last year, because that's on state holidays.
You can take either that or robbery league birthday. It's a choice, which you want to.
So are we gonna go with the state holiday selection?
That's what we did in the manual. We said state holidays, whatever they are, but that, that June 10th has just been added in this last session.
It's not all the state holidays in the manual.
But it's, it's just been added by the state legislature this time.
I'm not talking about June 10th, it's all, like, there's, there's multiple holidays that are not in our manual that are state holidays. That's where the confusion came.
Yeah, I think we were missing like, three days in our manual.
So I guess the question is, do we go by the manual or do we go by the state holiday list? I think that was, that's the question.
That's what we're all about.
Yeah, because I think we had added a day for Thanksgiving and another day for Christmas, I think Christmas Eve or something, and Thanksgiving. Two days, and Christmas, two days. There was another day on there, I don't remember what it was, that we had added extra.
So we're gonna go with the state holiday list?
Do you want me to grab it and tell you what the differences are? Because I have it written down.
And I see the bus is gone.
We got $1,000. And I think I sent y'all an email about that. Very fortunate, with the guy that borrowed it, he said he wouldn't only pay that money for it, but that because of, to help the senior center out. And the reason he uses it is to transport people back and forth to Paulina.
Really?
Yes, he's got a mobile home bar, big one down there, it's a big town. When anybody comes in, Alabama, Auburn family, whatever, he has buses, not just our bus, but buses that transport them back and forth from his mobile home, I mean, his RV.
Holidays, the additional holidays.
Just state per hour?
This is state additional holidays. It's President's Day, 2/19, Confederate Memorial Day, 4/22, anniversary of Davis's birthday, June 3rd. Of course, June 10th is something that we haven't normally had, and then Columbus Day. And everything else you've got on your list. So you're gonna give out 1, 2, 3, you gotta give June 10th, you don't have a choice on that, but 1, 2, 3, four additional days to what you've got listed.
15 total.
They're not, they're not, they support me, so.
That's right. These extras that she just read off are state.
They're in the email that Rodney sent.
Yeah, they're state, but not what we had in the manual, so. So they're gonna be 15 paid holidays. I think I'm right.
Well, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 paid holidays.
And does East Alabama coincide with state holidays?
No.
To a point, yes.
Can you see how many holidays they have? I didn't realize we were gonna talk about this, I would've been better prepared. Okay, so they have, let's do the count. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. But it's not the same. They take Good Friday, we're not doing it. They take Martin Luther King Day.
We got it too.
Do it, okay, sorry, and New Year's Day, Christmas, oh, their Christmas is, 5 days. Thanksgiving's too, Veterans Day, Columbus Day, yep, we do that. Confederate Memorial, they have them all except that, what did I just call it? For the Christmas, they take five holidays. They take five days, where we are only doing two, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day.
So I guess senior center follows East Alabama holidays, and then other town employees follow state holidays? Is that the way we're gonna?
Well, I don't know about that, because she's a town employee, and so.
At Christmas time, what I did was came in and worked. The days that they did not serve us meals, I came in and did clean and done whatever I could to work at the senior center and just took my two days that the town gave me.
I mean, it doesn't matter, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that we know what's.
That's a good point.
So Good Friday really is the...
That's the only one that's not on anybody's list that we took in error this year, but we also, you know, we didn't get paid for President's Day or Confederate Memorial Day. So that worked itself out, but, you know, we'd have to do it from today forward, I guess. Whatever y'all tell me, but that's what happened with Good Friday.
Well, do I hear a motion that we do that? You know, like, the holidays that we go by the state holiday?
I'm having a motion.
They got a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
I'm just gonna repeat it so that we're all on the same page. Every town employee will do 15 paid holidays as per what we discussed, that are the Alabama state holidays. And I've got the list, and I'll send that out following the meeting, or I'll put it in our minutes, how about that? And then the senior center, obviously, the only full-time that we have right now is Tasha, and she will follow the same schedule as town employees.
Will you send that to me, Samantha?
Oh, of course.
So we got a motion, a slacker?
Okay, Josh?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And, oh, Kristy?
Yes.
And I have been advised that I'm supposed to be voting for the town our size, so I will say yes.
Maintenance moving forward, I guess, or how are we doing?
Yeah, they asked right before the meeting, Trevor, when, whenever I let Tammy know, she said there was no anything further needed from us, no further action. She said if there was anything that came up, she would let me know, had not heard back from her. She would just let them know, and that was the end of it. And of course, I've been checking, you know, I don't know that they have that machinery ready and paid for it, whatever the case is. We'll figure that part out.
Yeah, that's what we say October's supposed to be, you know?
The other thing, I will check with Joyce to make sure that there's like an audit or assessment, an assessment, I think that's what she calls it, for the property.
Well, we're making a motion for both minutes. We're in a angle, right?
Separately.
They do, same.
Okay, so which one will now the, eight?
I'm making a motion to accept, angle eight.
Motion, I hear a second.
I'll second.
Who's second?
All right, now then, moving forward.
Okay, Kristy?
Yes.
Dennis? Mitzi?
Yes.
And Josh?
And Rodney. Please add me to the list. Okay. All right, now we're going to the approval of financials.
4/22, 4/22.
Oh, I thought that's what we just did.
4/8 is what we did.
Okay, I thought we already did the 4/22, but let's go ahead and do it anyway. Okay, 4/22.
I'm making a motion to accept the council meetings for 4/22.
Motion, here a second.
I'll second.
Josh?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Dennis?
Kristy?
And Trevor?
Okay, now, we jump into the approval of financials for April, for April. I made the black and corporate of the chair. I got something to do. What this is, I just hit it out, y'all, is something that I've done ever since I've been mayor. Started in the fiscal year of October, nineteen twenty twenty, coming forward and. What it is, every month I would take the account or statement from the bank. And I would put in the ending ballots, I'd put down how many deposits it was, how much the deposits were. And how many debits that we wrote out of that for that month. And I did it all the way to September twenty twenty-one, the first year. And as you can see, you, we had in twenty twenty-one, or the year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, we had two hundred and sixty-two deposits. We had a deposit amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and four hundred thirty-seven, thirty dollars fifty-five cents. We had six hundred and twenty-eight debits. We had three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars expenses paid out in that fiscal year. We had a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars and seven, a hundred and twenty thou- twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two thou- seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents to the good. At the end of that fiscal year. That's come as trade-off bank statements. The next year, you can see, same thing, except that next year it increased a little bit, it went to five hundred and forty-five thousand. We spent out five hundred and one thousand, had forty-four thousand dollars left. Okay? The, the next year, we had, uh, to jump again, it went to eight hundred thou- eight hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents. And then we spent out eight hundred and nineteen, and we had a deficit of twelve thousand dollars. And the reason for that was because we paid for that property over there. For the, for the wrecked bar, twenty-three thousand dollars that came straight out of the general fund. That's the reason why there was a deficit.
But we bought that property in lieu of paying their, the wreck department's power bill every month? And grass cutting every month, you remember that?
I'm saying that, what I'm saying is, we still, that's how much we spent, we spent twenty-three thousand, we didn't start doing that till afterwards. After we approved that, yes, we did. We approved, we had to do that, you know, public do- purpose doctrine. And we agreed, they agreed by a lease that they would have to pay everything. The only thing that was ever said was that we would pay to enforcement a six thousand dollars, but it was waived the first year. It was waived because they were supposed to do some things they didn't do. That's the reason of the way. They were gonna do the attorney fees, they were gonna do the, uh, the survey. We paid for all that.
Yeah, but the, the trade-off was land, we gave them land. I know.
That was for one year, but we still bought that property out of the general fund.
I know, but instead of paying the like seven hundred something dollars a month, grass cutting? And their power bill, we coupled all that together, didn't pay that and bought the property instead.
I don't think that's what it was.
I think we would've decided we were just gonna make a donation, we didn't say we was gonna pay for the power and the grass, but we were gonna make a donation of money that would have covered that expense.
Yeah, and the reason.
No, no, I'm talking about before they went on their own. I'm talking about before the wreck department split up and all of that. We were paying seven hundred something dollars a month for their grass to be cut. And we were paying their lo- their power bill. This was, when I came on, that's what was happening for years. And when everything happened, then we stopped paying the grass cutting and the, and the power.
Because of the lease.
No, that's not.
Yes, it was, it's in the lease, they have to pay.
Had we sold it, had we sold it, that was in the lease.
They want that?
The contract, yes.
Yes, it's in, it's in the lease, it's in the lease, they have, they have to pay everything.
I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying we get a trade-off of. We didn't have.
I don't see that, I don't see a trade-off, because they agreed to a lease that was written up by Chad Lake.
This is before, I'm going before that.
I know that, we were paying out money to them, but they chose to go out on their own, on their own to a five O and C three, that's the reason the lease had come up.
I understand.
They chose that. We said that we would, talked about doing a, a six thousand dollar appropriation. But we didn't do it, because it was a trade-off, because they didn't do what they said they were gonna do initially. Which was to pay for the attorney fees and to pay for the thing, we just come up with a six thousand dollar picture. We didn't.
Okay, how much did the power bill used to cost?
Springtime, it was over.
What per year?
Fourteen, we paying out a good bit of money every year because of that.
And seven hundred and something dollars a month.
But that doesn't have any effect on what, on how we did this, because it was their choice to go out on their own. And we had to follow that line, give one for me.
I'm, I'm talking about before they went out on their own, but it's, it's okay, I'll find it in the minutes. It was before they went out on their own. We were paid, they were, we were spending an extreme amount of money to support them. And now, and so we, we bought the land, we'd given them six thousand, it was kind of all as a trade-off.
The land was twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And then the, the cost of the attorney fees and the, um, and the, um, what you call it? The survey, the survey, it cost us twenty-three thousand dollars that we spent out of the general fund.
I don't, I'm not, I know.
Yes, and I'm just trying to make a point about that. But we, but that's how that all came about. And so now, we have just approved six thousand dollars for appropriations, we did it correctly. We had a public hearing, the whole backyard about that, we did, we did that correctly. But that's the reason for the deficit this last year. And I'm talking about when it got to September, the end of September, we were twelve thousand dollars in the hole. And we're still, we're still rocking like crazy, because if you look back to October of twenty twenty, we started out with eighty-three thousand dollars in the general fund. Now we got, what is it now, two hundred and sixty-three thousand at, at the end of April.
How many accounts have we combined into the general fund?
I don't know if any we've combined into it, not yet.
We haven't combined any, any of our accounts.
No, we're close on them. And we approved, we approved the budget.
What you didn't have correct was your tax distribution, remember that?
Yes.
And then you also, I don't know when, that you've got the mortgage on list and doubled your utilities.
But that's just, I'm, I'm supposed to, I read up on this, I'm supposed to give y'all a financial report every quarter. And that's what I'm gonna try to do, and I'm gonna use this to go back. I've even got the, I've been working on the Senior Center Fund and the Police Fund to the same thing. But I'm only gonna do it from them from October of last year, following. So that we can see where our money's going, how we're spending that money out of the Senior Center Fund, we have never done that before. Not that I recall. We've never sat, just sat down and looked where the money was going in the Senior Center Fund or Police, Police Fund. But now we're getting, now we're getting the Senior Center Fund, I mean, the account is in this stuff here. And we're getting it for the Police Fund. So that's about as good as I can do, you know, as far as what our financial condition is. We're eighty-eight thousand dollars to the good right now, eighty-two thousand at the end of October, I mean, I'm sorry, April, at the end of April.
For twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yes, uh-huh. We're eighty, eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars going by the general fund account. Anybody got a question about that or anything?
Just remember guys, that it's not gonna be accurate, I didn't go back any further than twenty twenty, but your tax distribution was not accurate. So now you've got taxes that should've been going into street funds, wherever, Petro Fund, all that, like, we've got that corrected now. So what you're looking at may be elevated, you know.
All right, anybody got a question about that? Okay.
This is helpful, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Now, who's on the bill about, uh, approving the financials?
So the party's been playing, hasn't been married yet.
Not at that time, it has not.
Gotcha.
Has any progress been made toward another item?
We got, I've got that on the, yeah.
Oh.
It's on, it's on the top page, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we got, just got that.
I'm making a motion to accept.
Got a motion, here a second.
Say it.
Josh?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Christian, Trevor?
Yes.
All right, now we'll ask Barry Dolan, if he will give us a report, I think he's handed a C and one here.
On the agenda is not to, for items to approve to pay, do you wanna do that while you're doing financial?
About what?
Items to approve to pay. Do you wanna do it while you're doing financial or waiting to?
While we can do that. Cause it's far as financial.
Okay, so, I really don't have any items that I need approval for, but I have things that I want to know if I can buy, or we can buy, that's how I should've said it. Okay, so the police department needs digital cameras. And I'll tell you why, because right now they're using their cell phones, which is fine, we're paying for their cellphone. But if they take a picture in a case, that can, their cellphone can be confiscated as evidence.
I thought we ordered through there.
That body camera?
No, no, that's not body camera, this is, two different.
That P camera might take pictures of our rigs and.
This kinda thing.
Gotcha.
And it's just got a little card and they put it in, and right now even, like, Brian is using his own personal. Because he don't wanna use his phone, because it can be confiscated, and he has more than anybody else. But anyway, I found some what I think are pretty good ones, so they were seventy dollars, so I'm thinking four hundred bucks for all four of them to be equipped. And we can take this out of the fine fund or PD seizures, whichever way y'all wanna go with it, but fine fund is our better option if you have a good goodbye. We've got like ten thousand dollars in there right now. Okay, so keep that in mind. The second thing is, I think in an effort to retain police officers, we've all talked about this more than once, is the state retirement. We're one of very few that don't offer that, okay? So what happens is, I've, I've done a little, a lot, a lot of research, just to kinda see where we are with it. So initially, they have to do a study, and it's basically to just see how many they would have to support, what, and what our portion is, what we can pay toward it, okay? That is a thousand dollars, period, it's gonna be a thousand dollars upfront.
For, for the survey?
For the, for the study, yes.
Yes.
Okay, then, within six months, cause I looked back through records, 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 we've done this study twice. So right after that, you've got six months, is, this study will be good, six months. And we're gonna offer it, we will offer it to five employees, not everybody will participate, but you have to put them down to offer it to them. But not everybody will participate. And then if all five did participate, based on the last study, which was maybe two or three years ago, I don't remember the date. But the process is kinda the same, and our portion, the city portion was like four thousand four hundred, so let's say five thousand a month. That is just, just off the top of my head, looking at it, looking at all the statistics, I think you would end up with an investment of five thousand a year now. Yes, a year, a, a, oh, God, no, did I say a month? No, it is definitely a year. And that's not a firm now, I'm not, I'm not trying to sell this with it being firm, it's not. That's just based off of what I saw and where we are now statistically wise.
Can I say that, uh, when we did that, do you know why it didn't go through? It was, it did not go through because the, the state told us that we did not have a budget, and we did not have our, uh, we had not been audited. Our books had not been audited two thousand and three, and that's the reason that they sent us a letter and told us that we can't do it.
Well, we could get a budget together within six months.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to.
Could we not?
Well, we can, we can do that, but it's not like Katie Funtick said, I said y'all eat, I thought that, what she's saying.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be after Kate, because we're, we're walking off of projections. And, and you can't, it's not, it's not gonna be of any value to us until we do the end of this year, which is the end of, be September. And she, after September, they gonna do an audit. At that time, we will have some actual figures from September or October of last year up to September of this year. And that's what she was saying, the email I sent y'all. And so it's just sorta crazy to be doing a budget right now, uh, to do that. And, and that has been a problem, we've been knowing that, I told Barry that, he's asked him about being on, you know, having state retirement. And I told him why, I said, well, why we don't have a budget, we don't have, uh, we have had our books. And I told him why, I said, well, why we don't have a budget, we don't have, uh, we have had our books audited, but we're heading in that direction fast. And then once we do, then we can go to the stage, I think it cost us like fourteen hundred bucks the last time, best I recall. It cost us fourteen hundred dollars.
For this study?
To pay for the stuff for, for procurement, for them to do it. And then we just lost that money when they told us they sent us that letter, we lost that.
And who's gonna do the audit?
Katie Condit with MDA Associates. And she does the audit, so Vanessa Plow did the follow-up here.
Could, and I understand what you're meaning by, cause I, I read the email, um. Could we not put together a, a budget in September and just project? Or put together a budget in August and project September so that we could have it for October, so we could have a budget for October?
We could do that, yeah.
I mean, we would only be projecting one month.
But you gotta have, you know, you, you gotta have some actual figures, you know, to do that, that's what she was saying.
Would that be feasible?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think she'd have a problem with that either.
Well, I, I did talk to Katie, looking for my notes, hold on just a second.
How long will it take her to do the audit?
It's gonna be, hold on, I have a, just let me, if y'all will bear with me one second, I can't find my notes from Katie, hold on. Cause I did speak to her. Okay, hold on, okay. She says, um, plan for with the budget, okay. What, what I told her is that the, the budget that you guys have been supplied, that everything that I gave you, is not to vote on, hey, we got a budget, we can't, we're mid-year. But for guidance to finish out this year, just to look at, we're not looking to approve it right now. We're just gonna use it as, oh my god, we can't spend any more than that, or whatever the case may be, something to look at. And she says that even though we do not have historical data from twenty to twenty-three, that we can use our audit update and data that we have at October twenty-three to twenty-four, and we can accurately depict our financial status from twenty-four, for twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay, so she said recommends continuing with the process and then waiting until the audit is complete. Here's the answer to your question, it will be January or February of twenty-five. But she said that shouldn't hold us up from adopting our budget, because you're, you're, everything is there. But she said then there will be changes based off of the audit findings, obviously, but we, we'll. Honestly, I couldn't understand what they are right this minute because I know, because I'm in it. And she said then we would have a firm budget at that point, January, February, that I can actually put into the accounting system. But she says there's no reason that we hold up progress right now, like. Based off my conversation with her, what I've been able to supply you guys, I would propose that we go ahead and meet. What are we gonna do in September, sit down for an hour and say, yep, here's our budget? I say we go ahead and start chopping away at this thing and looking, so that October the first, we're ready to go.
Have a year's worth of that.
Yeah. And if there are items that you look at and you think, woo, this may not, this, maybe this was a, um, a year of ups and downs on this particular expense, well then I'll go up there and dig through the folders and try to find something for that particular item. Now, it's unrealistic to think that I go back up there and plug in the data from twenty to twenty-three. But if we had isolated instances where y'all wanted more information on one item, I'm, I can dig and try to find something.
And we might could even use some of the information from the, the budget you two did, uh, what, a couple of years ago, has it been two years now?
Yeah.
I mean.
That's why I whacked down, you know? And he was trying, he was, he was trying to help us, and we paid him to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, you know, we didn't do it, and so now here we are. And again, it goes back to my point about the, about the police, about the retirement system. We have to have that in place, we're not gonna do it, you know, they don't tell us.
Well, I feel like if we, if we did this and we did what she's, Katie's suggesting.
Yeah, we could.
Um, it sounds like within, let's see, what says May? Maybe not apply for it just yet, maybe August.
August, September.
And that would give us, August, September, October, November, December, January, or maybe do it in September.
Yeah, cause she'll start the audit after October.
Yeah, that would give us some.
At the beginning of October, she'll start her work doing the audit based off of the data that we got from October of last year up till September of this year.
And they're already plugging in with May, like, every month when I send, you know, I send them different reports than I send you. And they're already plugging in and saying, hey, you need to look at this, hey, you need to look at that. And I'm making corrections as we go, which I think is to her point about the budget. We, we whack away at this thing so that we're not waking up one day and saying, woo, we need a budget October first. Because, y'all, it was no easy feat, what I plugged in and the research that I did to even give you guys what you've got right now. So you think bring this back up again in September?
September.
Okay. To start the study around that time, okay? Hey, that's, that's great, okay, hold on. Now that I got off track, I'm gonna see if there's, okay. The other thing for the Police Department, we had already talked about this, is their tasers. Remember, I gave y'all a, a bill or a quote on it for nineteen twenty-nine? And this gets all of them their tasers with the, the dock that's very similar to their body cam and the use goes straight into, you know, to be saved. And we can definitely use the fine fund on this, and I've already checked with Allison, and she says as long as you guys approve it, that that's how we can go. So it's gonna be around a two thousand dollar purchase.
Did Barry help pick out these?
Oh, Barry did it, I'm just, he would like to purchase it, and I'm just asking if we can.
If we do, do this, Barry, can we choose someone that you can taste in front of us?
How about a solid option? I think Patrick should come do it.
Sign a waiver.
Sign a waiver.
So we need to, we need to vote on that because it's over the thousand dollars. But now the four hundred dollar cameras, you don't have to do it, but.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I'm okay to take that out of the fine fund.
All right, and so let's vote on this taser.
Okay.
I hear a motion. It'll be just, it'll be just one taser, we're one taser short. We've all got new tasers, seven, one, new ones.
But is it dock, is it the docks maybe for everybody or no?
We've got the dock already, all it'll be is a taser.
For one, that's one.
It'll be the taser, yeah, because we need one more taser, but it will, the new also will.
And that one is nineteen twenty-nine?
Yeah, that's for it, and the, and that's the service package for the evidence dot com. That's, that includes all of that for the next three or four years, something like that, I think it is.
I think it's two, well, I think two.
It remind, they, they tied it in with the ones we got now. They tied it in with the contract that we got now already through these. So it'll, it'll, it'll go in with that contract.
I think it ends at twenty-six, so two years.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion, here's yours.
Trevor, hold on just a minute, I wasn't ready for that. Josh?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Christian Trevor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go to that, and then the last thing that I have is a reimbursement. Okay, so, this is reimbursement for Rodney for a black cartridge and I think paper. Not a problem, except that it is, it was bought with a personal credit card or debit card, whichever the case may be. Shipped to his wife at his home address.
It's actually shipped to money, but it says pay on the cost, and it's on my Amazon account.
Which is, that's fine, all I'm saying is, if this gets pulled in an audit, it's not gonna fly.
Well, it would, because we, we, we done it in the past.
We haven't been prepared for an audit in the past. And so when I talked to Katie, she said that, you know, it's been done, now it's done. So she said to include in the receipts and the payment and explanation of events. Why did you use the personal card instead of charging it to the town?
Because the town would not buy it.
The town, the town would not buy.
The clerk would not.
The clerk would not buy it.
And why was it shipped to the wife's address and not to the town address?
Because the clerk would not buy it, so it had to go to our house.
How much is it?
Um, it's not much.
Eighty-six dollars?
Yeah, it's like eighty-six bucks, which is fine, I mean, I'm not saying not reimbursed, I'm just saying for audit purposes, these are the things that y'all are paying me to catch, just so. Because if it's, I mean, it might be pulled in audit, it might not, y'all wanna take a chance on it, that's fine, but this is what Katie said we needed.
And I think I said this last time, we, uh, the school is aud- audited every year, and there was an invoice that I had that literally was, I think it was two dollars and something cents off, and I had to prove to them that it was a clerical error.
Since my name is on the card, it will do what she's supposed to.
Yeah, if you go and comment, talk for the audit purposes and explain, they're moving forward.
I need it from Rodney, is what she's saying, she said he needs to offer an explanation of events.
Well, I'm, I'm offering an explanation right now.
In writing?
Yep.
Write it down inside.
I'll write down saying it, but my goodness, I got it because the clerk would not purchase it, period. And y'all all know that. I sent emails.
Next time, just hit the card you said.
That's what I want, I want the card, and I want the password and, uh, user ID for the Amazon, so I've got to do this myself. I don't have to ask for it, I'll just do it. But I've got the help, I'm out of ink right now. The ink that I got, that I purchased, I had to give it to Tasha, cause she run out.
And the clerk would not.
And the clerk would not buy it for me. And that's, that's it in the dossier, there's nothing else, please look back. That's the reason why I have used my personal card, which I didn't like to do, and I don't intend to try to do that anymore. It's not fair for me to have to use my personal card to buy office supplies.
Well, the town card is in the office there with a log, you know, who's got it, who's taking it out? And when they return it, we've been doing that since I was in here, since October. Tasha does it, I do it, Barry's done it, and nobody asked for it.
Well, I was told not to talk to you, so I didn't. You told me to get away from your window, not to come back over there. You know you did. And so, anyway, I'm just saying, there was a reason why that occurred. And yes, I do want to sign that card out. To purchase what we need for supplies. Now she has no problem, she can, uh, do it supplies for the Police Department. She gives them whatever she wants, whatever they want. But not me, not Tasha. So I don't, I want the card.
I think it needs to stay here, I don't think it need to be here, I mean, it's taken in and out here, like, I mean, if they're gonna do that, I think, you know, whoever else is.
If we sign it out, that's the reason we signed it out for.
There has never been a sign out until I took it in October.
I just asked for it and I gave it to, was no problem in fact. It's an accountability, and I understand, I don't have a problem signing it out.
Just get it now.
I want it tonight. I want to be able to sign it out, tonight. And I also want the username, password for the Amazon account.
The Amazon account is not, it's, it's in Rocky's name, and I don't know, it just comes up on the computer, so I don't know the password.
You could probably go in. You don't have it saved on your computer?
No, I've never, to my knowledge, I've never done anything on Amazon. It's all like it was done by a previous clerk, and it's done by the clerk now. You know, a board or stuff, and it's already got the card in there. It automatically charges it, so it's around.
Oh, well, all you need is just the, you just need to change the password.
I don't have it, like, it, it just automatically pulls up, you know.
I don't remember what it was, cause we set that thing up long, and I think the previous clerk did that, set it up.
You can reset your passwords on Amazon, I did it about every two months, I don't give a.
It's, it's got.
I don't have, I guess.
It's got Rodney's information on it, so I can't reset.
Well, I, I will, okay, I'll do.
But you reset all that, it just needs to be.
Yeah.
It needs to be emailed to her or whatever, translate, uh, tell her about it.
And then it does, like you said, it does save the card, and that way you get your order off of Amazon and, and wouldn't even have to physically have the card.
Yeah, and the only thing I, the only thing that I've had to order myself and ask for was the darn ink cartridge, you know, and so.
And we're sticking to black ink cartridges, correct?
Well, I can use black, Natasha can't, she's gotta use the color. Uh, we could get it at a cheaper price, I've talked with, uh, the people at, yeah, the best buys, I've talked with the guy that we purchased the printers from and all. And they all suggest, I don't know if this is a sale pitch or what, but they all say, do not use anything except HP cartridges. Do not use clones, uh, you know.
Well, they're not as full anyway.
That, they, the printers won't accept them, they won't, Mitzi was here with me, we had fourteen of the other ones. And it, it won't accept them.
Well, one thing too, is that, uh, the cost on those things, I know that was a consideration on the cost, but it's, those are high volume. And the cost is, is no more than if you got a simple printer at home and you gotta go buy a print cartridge for it. It's all bas- based on volume, well, these are ten thousand.
Copies.
Ten thousand copies, it is like business printers, and that's the reason why we bought them. And we bought them with COVID money, back in twenty, twenty-one, I think it was. And I think, we got one in my office, we got one in, uh, Clark's office, we got one at, at, uh, Senior Center. I don't know if they, Barry, is there one back there? A printer? Black, black one I got.
Yeah, you print on it.
But like, right now, my, my black is just about that. I mean, I got, when you pull it up on the HP Smart thing, it'll show you how much ink we got. I have actually had to take ink out of my printer, take it down to Tasha, for her to be able to print what she needs to print for, for, uh, East Alabama. And, um, it's just a presentation type thing. I personally don't need the ink, and I, I already know, I've got two or three that sent two in my printer right now that are empty. But because I'm, when I click on, black only, black and white, that's all printed. I don't necessarily need color for anything, I can get by with it. So, like I said, the cost, the cost has got to do with volume. And that's what we need to understand about the printer, printer cartridges, how much, how much they cost. And we've been buying them since two thousand and twenty-one. So, anyway, I think that settles it, y'all, y'all agree with that?
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Excuse that was a.
Okay.
So guess mileage, why we don't.
Yeah.
From the rodent for eighty-five twelve. I believe last week he went to Atlanta to look at a van for the senior, be okay, just go and turn it in, correct? And no, no one's signing it but him.
And then I guess this is, um, these are the, these are the receipts for the, um, gas that was put in the town truck for personal use, um, for you to reimburse?
Well, it was for personal use and business use, by the way, I'll make that clear. I didn't just drive it personally all the time. I did go to the, and we talked about this, and the clerk talked about this, that I had to go, I had to go for my workouts and that kind of stuff because of my health issue. And I go three days a week. Sometimes I don't go three days a week, cause I can't, something come up. And I went, in my mind, it's back in January now, in my mind, I only went probably twice in the town truck when I put gas in. But I also used it for, for business too.
I guess all you need to do, and that's not a problem, all you need to do is write down, if you just wanna write down which, um, how many miles of business you had and deduct that.
I don't know. I really, I really can't, I, it's gonna be a guess if I do. You know what I'm saying?
Then you reimburse the town?
Yes, I can reimburse the town.
I think that needs to be done.
Thirty-seven, twenty, and thirty-eight, seventy-one.
Eighteen, nineteen dollars.
Altogether. I can do that. I can write you a check tonight. Uh, to do that, if, if that's, if that's what y'all want to do, if you want me to pay it. Okay.
I do.
Do you, do I hear a motion that y'all, that y'all, uh?
We got a bunch of stuff on the table. We don't, we're gonna make a motion on this.
Okay.
We got several other things right here.
But I will, I will make sure that we're agreement about this right here now.
We'll have to agree about it. I feel like you need to repay it. Whether everybody else agrees or not, using town property for personal use is wrong.
But I also used it for business too.
The last time this came up, business was never mentioned. This is the first time I've heard of being used for business.
Well, of course it is. I mean, my goodness, I, I didn't drive that thing around just for personal use.
I didn't know you was driving it for the town. I don't know about it.
Well, we, the clerk and I talked about it. Oh yeah, go ahead and use it. Yes, go ahead and use it. You're the mayor. You can do what you want to do.
Anyway, I feel like, I'm just, I'm just.
If I had known, if I had have known that was gonna happen, I'd promise you I wouldn't have done it.
There's a lot of things in our life, you know, we know what the consequences of it, we wouldn't have done it. But I was saying, I personally feel like you need to pay it back. I'm just one person. You ask, you want everybody's opinion. I'm giving you mine.
Yep. Well, I want, I want it in a motion and I want to, I want, I want to be voted on. That y'all, that's your agreement, but I want the whole council.
I make a motion, you reimburse the town for personal use of town property.
I second it.
We got a vote, we got a first and a second.
Josh, you really should not vote because it happened before you.
Wait for you.
I mean, I would abstain if it were.
I, that's, I was, I was thinking of staying unless as far as that goes. I believe I will.
Okay, Mitzi. Yes. Dennis.
I don't know, cause I know he's burnt his personal gas before, a good bit, and not turned it in.
I think we've all done that. We've spent personal time and effort and going here and there and doing whatever.
I do it all.
I mean, that's just a personal thing.
Christie.
Yes.
And Trevor.
Yes.
So Dennis, just you.
I'm gonna stay.
All right. Got that.
But I also make a motion to reimburse Rodney for that Amazon card that he used his personal card or whatever.
Oh, definitely. All I need is.
To pay him back for that.
All I just need is that statement. And then, I mean, I got no problem paying it back. I just need the statement.
I make a motion.
I'll make a statement before I leave tonight.
It just needs to be in writing.
Okay, I'll do one tonight. I'll write it out. Okay.
Let's give the same, put in those records.
The same way. Okay.
But I make a motion to reimburse you back.
Okay, got a motion. We hear a second.
Same, same as before. I was before my time. I'm gonna, I'll wait on, I'll wait on next month for this.
Mitzi.
Uh, yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Christie and Trevor.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Barry didn't finish his report.
Okay, Barry.
You finished.
That's it for me.
Finish.
All right. I think y'all have all got a handout. Noticed call volume jumped nearly double last month. Seventy-four calls for the month. We was running thirty-five, forty calls. And I could feel it too.
Warm weather.
All through the night, but made sixteen traffic stops, uh, for the month, three misdemeanor arrests, one DUI arrests. Also met with the city insurance company for a yearly survey. I got the survey and I think Rodney got a copy of the survey. They emailed him too. Got about seven pages worth of stuff that I've got to do, plus some of it the city council's got to do. Um, and, uh, and Jeremy, he, he started the academy. Officer Jeremy started the academy, made the six, doing, doing real good right now. Uh, he's made it through the rough part, so he's, he's doing good.
When is he supposed to get out?
It'd be August, sometime in August, first of August, sometime, yeah, like first week or so of August. And then, uh, Daniel was awarded officer of the year at the annual law enforcement appreciation ceremony in Oxford. And then me and Daniel both received our annual NTOX DMT training this last month. And, um, also along with that survey, a few things that they had mentioned for the city council would be, um, they recommended that we add insurance for reserve police officers, like a workman comp's insurance. It's like a hundred and thirty-five dollars per officer. We got two officers.
Per year?
Yeah, yeah. They recommended us taking that, um, taking that out for the, the, the city, taking out the additional coverage for reserve police officers. I thought we already had it, but evidently we didn't.
There are two reserves.
Uh, um, Tucker, Steve's brother, Randall Tucker and DJ Benford.
DJ.
Yeah. Um, so that was one thing. And then there was another one, um, they recommend the municipality adopt the use of municipality workers' compensation fund injury triage program. Um, I've read over this. It's basically like when you have like minor, if we were to have a minor injury and you didn't really wanna go to the doctor or the ER, you could call a nurse online or call a nurse and they would tell you what to do. And if they thought it was worth you going to the hospital, they would tell you go into the hospital. It says, we looked at it today, it says, here's the flyer on it, it says it's no cost to, to the, um, municipality. But we know nothing's free, so. But we're gonna, we're gonna call, we're gonna call and, um, and get, um, get some more information on it.
I wonder if that's going to end with the insurance that we have left.
It may be.
I think it is. There's just one little statement that they make in there that is kinda, you're thinking, hmm, is that a little skip? You know, we just felt like after Barry and I looked at it, talked, you know, and read every sentence individually that we might need to call. At first we were thinking all in, but maybe just at least make that one call and make sure.
They're, they're available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days.
If there's anything like that, I used to have to tell it up. Man, it's great.
Yeah, it, it's very, cause I have that too.
It's a triage nurse.
It is.
Yeah.
It's good stuff.
Then the, the other thing, of course, all these other things on here, stuff I've got to do, policy and procedures, I've got to do within the next year to be compliant. And then this was the big thing for me, um, is, um, it's recommend that municipality pass a resolution or policy that authorizes police officers to work secondary or off-duty employment utilizing municipal-owned and issued equipment in accordance to the code of Alabama thirty-six dash twenty-five dash five. It'd be like, just say, for instance, when the bank got robbed and they hired off-duty police officers to come in and work at the bank. In order for us to do that, we've got to have a resolution saying that we're able to do that. It's basically like, when I went through the, um, new chiefs comp, uh, class, it, it's an ethics violation if I go down there and sit in my uniform and with my truck parked up there without the city, unless the city.
On our clock.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't be on y'all's clock.
No, unless you were on our clock.
Yeah, yeah, if we was, and see like, I worked every year, Fourth of July and Christmas at Fireworks Place. They called every year, wanting officers to work up there. And I was told it was all right last year and I worked up there, but, but I don't, I don't know of us having a resolution or a policy, uh, saying that we can do it, you know? But it's just something, and, um, and I've even got a, I've even done, already done a, um, policy and procedure for my part, if y'all pass it, that will, that will cover the police department. It's actually got a form that if you go and do it, you've got to fill out an application and it's gotta be approved by chief of police or head person and the company you're working for has got to sign off on it and say that they're supplying insurance, liability insurance to cover if anything happens or anything like that. But I've already got the policy and procedure done, a sample one that they give us that we could just use as theirs. And it seemed pretty good. I took it home with me this weekend and read over it at night and, um, when I had time.
Did they give you a sample resolution for us to use as well?
No, I didn't see a, here is a paper, some paperwork that was on the, but it, I don't think it don't. This is the paperwork that come with it too, that was on far as resolution and stuff, but.
So Barry, what about our insurance? Cause there's some kind, do y'all purchase an outside insurance to cover your van or?
This was saying that, that was saying, or in this policy thing was saying that according to the state code of Alabama, they have to supply, the business has to supply like a hundred thousand dollar for its liability insurance.
Okay, but like.
But I know, I talked to Jer, uh, Daniel, saying he used to work with Anniston and they done it a lot. And their officers, he, he told me their officer was required to buy insurance theirself, to pay for insurance theirself to cover them when they were doing that stuff.
It was like three, four hundred dollars a year now. I, I just, I don't, I don't remember the details. I wish he was here to tell us, but I don't remember the details.
You don't, you don't make that same job for yourself, Barry?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've done it for years at Fireworks City, well, since me and my wife been dating, started dating, you know. In two thousand and one, I guess. Uh, but I've done it for years up there.
Can you look around and maybe we can get a resolution in place by next, uh, by the next meeting? Look around for a resolution?
Yeah, we can, uh, I'll look on here and see if they got any actual samples of that, cause like, see like everyone, see I've got these lists and stuff here that I've got to do. I've got a, like, policy and procedures for just using our can. Policy procedures for body cameras, policy procedure for, um, all kinds of that. Some of it we do.
Some we do.
Some of, a lot of it we don't. So I'm just going back through and what we don't have, I'm.
Yeah.
I'll see my truck here late at night. That's what I'm doing.
I look if you're asleep. No, I care.
I'm trying to get some of this stuff, uh, done to try to make us compliant before next year's.
Okay.
Before next year's survey.
Look, look for us a resolution pretty quick. That way you don't get in trouble around the time of fall.
He, he told me, you know, that, um, I didn't have to be in no real big hurry. I got a year to get it done, so. And, and all that. And some of it, he said, you really, it's just a recommendation, but I'd rather do it and be compliant and, and covers. We hope we never have to have it, but.
Yep.
But better safe than sorry. That's about all I've got.
Hey, what about Tom? Has he gone working in the summer?
He usually won't work.
So what about our SUVs? It stay at his house? Do we need to come back over here in case y'all need it?
I mean, in the times past, if one of ours went down, we went and got it, cause I had to do it one time. And the time passed. When, when mine went to the shop, I just called him, went by his house and got it and used it. I mean, uh, I mean, I could give him to bring it back. That's another thing. They require, they require him to go to SRO school, to be certified in SRO. Um, and I'll, and I've gotta talk to him about that.
I want to be the teacher.
Is that in the summer? I'm assuming it makes sense for it to be SRO.
Yeah, I think they've got one at like Orange Beach. It's a week long class. But, uh, but it, and that's about five or six hundred dollars just for the class.
Yeah, tell him, tell him to get it approved. Yeah, tell him to come up to us or somebody get in touch with you.
Yeah, yeah, that would be something we'd have to get approved, cause it, I mean, the class is like five hundred dollars, man. You'd have to have spinters for mug tails, stuff like that.
Yeah, tell them to get all that.
But I ain't even talked to him about it. I don't even know if he can even get in the class yet. But last, last year, they, last year they had one in, uh, center. Or the last time, uh, that's where Doug went. Doug ran one in center. So I, that's what I'm gonna try to do, find one local that we're, we're, we're just drive back for it or something. No, Texas camp.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
To Arden?
No.
No, he went to, to San, uh.
But I mean, if y'all wanted the vehicle brought back here, that, I mean, I can ask.
You know, I got to think about it. What if something was to happen, you know, and it was an emergency and he needed to get out here, you know?
Well, I mean, he's told, he's told me in the past that if we needed him, call him and be here.
Yeah.
And, and if he needed to come in and cover us, you have to cover something that he, but he, he didn't plan on working. That's what he had told. I remember like, I hadn't talked to him this year, but I know last year at Anniston year, I remember he was telling Glenn that he didn't plan on coming in unless we called him to come in, so. But he, I mean, he always tells me that every time I talk to him, he says, if you need anything, I'll, I'll be there, so, you know, so. Okay, anything else for me?
Thank you. What'd you do?
I've got a call holding, so. I've got a call holding. I didn't get going.
He went to fix it. It's larger.
We are strange.
Natasha, um, would you give us a report, please?
For the month of May, we have five new congregants that has signed on with us. We have two new home bounds that has signed on. Um, I renewed a, um, one congregant and five home bound, uh, that has already been on there. It was just their month to renew in May. Um, we do that every year.
Oh, I was about to ask, Cal, and you have to.
Every year, yeah. We have to do, we have to renew them yearly if they're still continuing to be on the program. Um, we had, this month alone, uh, three deletions due to death. Two of them were congregants and one was home bound. Um, we were able to fill in those, those spots, um, as, uh, for our waiting list, from our waiting list. Um, we had a total of twenty-two serving days for our congregant and our home bounds. Uh, we made a trip to Talladega, made a night for our May Day Fest. Our entire center was shut down for home bound and everything. So like, everybody had to go to that for, there was like over a thousand people in that building. I was getting so worried.
How many congregants did you have?
Uh, we took fourteen altogether.
Fourteen congregants? Oh, good.
And me and Samantha and Amber. Yeah.
That's good. That's a good term.
Yeah, yeah, it was. We enjoyed it.
Did y'all go in, did we have the bus at that time?
Mm-mm.
Now, how'd y'all go?
We had carpool. Everybody was driving everybody. And, uh, so, but I'm always sure to type up liability forms before we go anywhere and say, you know, that nobody's accountable for anything that happens, so, um, we all carpooled. Uh, May the twenty-fifth is my Saturday was our car fundraiser, car show fundraiser, and, um, considering the weather, I think we had pretty decent turnout, very proud. Um, ended up with, uh, two thousand two hundred and six dollars, um, from that between donations and silent auction and people entering their car and the sack lunches and all that. Um, the, the sack lunches was actually, we had, um, nothing in that whatsoever. So Country Boys donated all the hot dogs, the buns, the chips. Uh, my parents donated the little Debbie cakes. I remember I'd done the drinks, so that all of that would just be profit. We could try to keep the, the cost of that down. So we were like five bucks for all that. Come grab your hot dog meat, so. We did have a good turnout.
You did a good job getting it together.
Thank you.
It is, I know it's not easy to put together.
It's, it's not. I had a lot of help though. I did. And very, very proud of our little town. They showed up and showed out and just about everybody I asked for either a donation or a door prize or whatever they were willing to give, so. Very, very proud. Um, the only other thing that I have is the, um, Senior Center is, the, uh, Sen- seniors, I'll get it out in a minute, is asking for a new microwave and a TV for the center, so that we could do like the news and stuff like that. Um, it's not something we had to have right away. Our microwave, bit the dirt. Our microwave, bit the dirt last week, like sparks flying, gone, gone.
What is it used for?
The seniors can heat their meals up. They can, um, like they get butter every day with their meal. Like they can, uh, put their butter in their, um, rice or anything like that to melt it. We cannot heat anything up. We, now we put them in, um, the, uh, warmers to keep it warm and have to check temps as we go, but we are not allowed to warm it up, but they are. Makes no sense, but they are. Um, so we had asked for that and, um, I've done a, a little bit of research on the microwave and the TV and not looking to spend over, nowhere over four hundred dollars for the both of them. Well, I mean, we don't need anything expensive, but.
Why would you run your TV, just run like his wifi, like YouTube TV?
Cause we have the wifi already up there, so all we'd have to do is just local channels and with any smart TV and shit and I would pick up that, so.
Natasha, I'd like sure that you get the rest of the car when you do it, so.
The new, the two new home bound, were they closer in than they, than the others?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, the two new home bound is, um, city limits and actually I, I was able to move my numbers around. I called Amanda through East Alabama. I did not realize where Ms. Opal Taylor lived. And I was, we were going right by her house every day and she's been asking since I've been here to be on the, on the meals. And I didn't realize where she had lived at the time. I thought it was further past Goldridge Church. Well, I spoke with Louise, her sister, and she was like, no, this is where she lives. And we've been going by her house every day, like literally making a stop right beside her house every day. So, um, I spoke with her and we were able to move our numbers around where we're serving thirty-nine home bound now and only eleven congregants. So we're still getting the fifty meals a day. It just took one from our congregant, um, which, I mean, it's no big deal to them. They, they share all the time. If there's more than eleven congregants there, they don't mind giving their meal up if somebody else wants it, so. And that's kind of how we do with, you know, we have the five new congregants that come in, you know? And that's what Amanda will tell you, it's based on first come, first served. If, if y'all three show up first and say, I want a meal and y'all show up later and we don't have like, you know, have to serve the ones that get there first.
How did you get five new ones? Did you, um, was it word of mouth or?
Uh, it was word of mouth, part of it was word of mouth. Um, and then some of it was, we had, uh, two ladies that actually, they actually live in Graham and they drive over here every day, um, and they had heard about it through East Alabama program. And she had called me, contacted me and was like, we have two that maybe coming your way or whatever. Sure enough, they showed up and they've been coming every day since, so.
Well, did we, can, did we want to make a move on this TV and microwave? I mean, no need for them wait four more weeks.
Make a motion to give them a microwave and TV.
You got a motion, like get them, uh, microwave and TV.
How do we want them back? Does anyone have that?
Absolutely. They're not by here.
Everybody.
Are you second?
Second.
Any more questions?
Thank you. What'd you do?
I think you're gonna bring up about the bus after a while.
Yes, I hope, yes.
Josh?
Yes.
I'm Mitzi.
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kristia?
And Trevor.
All right, now, a report from, uh, ten o'clock.
So the back to school tax holiday for two thousand and twenty-four is July the nineteenth through the twenty-first. And if we want to participate, I just have to send in the information and then we advertise that we are participating. And I think if I looked back correctly, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but y'all have been participating. And I just want to make sure we do want to participate and I'll just go ahead and send that back. And then I know surely y'all saw it on Facebook, but the, at the blood drive, I want to say there was nineteen, um, that donated, but Savannah quick, was quick to tell me that that has the potential to save fifty-one lives. So awesome sauce. Um, and Savannah said that they will start to, to be a little bit more proactive in scheduling it so that we can start promoting it a little ahead of time next time. And what I'd like to do when they have it is maybe have a, like an ice cream truck or something like that out here. So anyway, I just wanted to report that, okay?
Do we need to present them using town property?
Probably so.
I'd say yes.
Yeah. So if they get a schedule of it.
Okay.
That way we can just.
All right, hold on, just let me write that down. Don't forget it. Prior, okay?
Thank you.
And I will let Savannah know, cause we would need it, you know, on cycle. Like I almost need to know two months in advance.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll let her know.
Anything else?
I do. Um, okay. So I know there is much discussion, I'm just looking at two different things. Um, about regular working hours for the clerk. So I got, been working on it and I want to do this a little bit of background just to make sure we're all on plan case. I'm the one that called and offered, me, I did it. I called and offered, hey. And immediately I told you guys, I am not looking for a full-time job. I am retired, don't want a full-time job. We've also said that on numerous times sitting in this room where I said, I don't, I, I have to be at the disposal of my kids. Now, I mean, you know, I can say, no, I'm not coming. I mean, if they needed me to know, then it should have been no, but that, that's my life. That's where I am and I'm happy about it. Um, but I've been super open and honest with you guys about that. And then, um, again, I explained that at that special call meeting, um, that y'all, there's nobody coming in this office. I did not have one phone call today. I did not have one visitor except Trevor. Uh, the emails are minimum. I mean, so in a day's time, what I need y'all to understand is what I'm doing is I'm coming in in the mornings, check email, get the mail, you know, just catch up on the daily things, shoot some emails out so I can get some responses or texts, whatever the case is. And then I might go home for a couple of hours, come back in the afternoon. Sometimes I even don't come back till six, seven o'clock at night, which is fine. I mean, that's fine. I come back, check the emails, see if there's anything I need to follow up on, look and see if Barry need. I mean, I'm serious, I'm just kind of overviewing the whole thing, check the emails and then I'm ready to go the next day. Like all the stuff I get ready to go the next day. I think the thing that I really need you guys to understand is there's, I'm here for the public and I haven't missed anything. Like Barry called me, Daniel called me, doesn't matter what is needed. I mean, I just run down here, I live right there, so let's run down here. But the citizens don't need anything anymore at the town hall. There is, they can't, they buy business license online, but at this point you're not selling any business license. I mean, unless we're gonna call up people that have started a business and say, hey, by the way, you need to buy one and we haven't been doing that. Now maybe we need to, I'm not saying we don't, but right now they buy that online. Court sliced everything in half. I mean, the time I was spending, and I've been completely honest with you guys about that, that when I, if I could get through that court situation, y'all were gonna see some cut in hours because I was spending a lot of time. And then also you have random people come in to pay fines, just fine. They can't even pay a fine here now, can't even do it. We're at a different place than we were prior to COVID. I mean, this is where we are. Today I received two phone calls and they were to my cell phone. Um, I mean, I don't mind telling you, but it was somebody in the county just needed me to pull a file. Went right up there, pulled the file, you know, took care of business. I don't want y'all to think that I'm ignoring anything because I'm really and truly at a beck and call. I mean, you guys asked me for something, I jumped right on it. I, I, it doesn't matter to me. So what I like to do is, that's a, that's the course of my day. And I do, I think what we need to consider is we're not where we were. So we are where we are. And I can get by with twenty hours. I probably could get by with some less at some point, but right now my best guess is twenty hours. And keep the job done. I mean, there's nothing that's not getting done. In addition to the regular work, y'all, I'm working upstairs in the files, I'm organizing, I'm cleaning the floor. I mean, whatever needs doing. But what I feel like we need to do is look at it as, you know, the insurance is important to me. I would like to continue to have town insurance. It's not a deal breaker, but I would like to continue that. So if you, twenty hours is not considered full-time unless you guys say it's full-time. If you guys say the clerk works twenty hours a week and that is considered full-time for her, then that is full-time and I can draw the benefits. But, you know, that's just something that y'all need to consider.
So Matt, we got, we got that on the agenda to talk about the ordinance. We got to do an ordinance. The council has to do an ordinance on where it's getting to.
I'm also open guys to transferring calls to my, like if, if you guys feel like regular working hours are eight to four, then I'm open to transferring the calls to my phone until a certain time, making sure that I'm not missing any. But basically everybody's calling my cell phone at this point. That's just where we are in this world. People don't call landlines anymore. They call or, or text your phone. So I'm open to that. I'm also open to you guys like transferring email. If you feel like I'm not responding, typically business rules say twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I am nowhere near that. Like I'm like three hours, two hours, like I'm jumping on an email. There's just not a lot, so I jump right on it. But if you guys feel it would benefit our town to have that email transferred to my phone so that I can look at it and say, ooh, that might need to be addressed right now, run down and do it, that's fine. And the other thing, when I was talking to Mitzi earlier, I know she brought up, and I, and I feel like I've been doing this, but, but for some reason, like if I wasn't gonna be here a day, of course I would let you know. You would, you would need to know that no calls are gonna be answered and nobody's gonna be doing email. Um, like if I was gonna be on a vacation day, whatever. And I'm, obviously, what I'm working now is what we would consider in the world we live in as flex hours. Um, flex hours are, they're, they're not unheard of. Actually they're, it's, it's, you work from home, you do flex hours, you do shared hours even. Where I come from, we did shared hours where I could work a six-hour shift. My friend could work a six-hour shift and that covered the whole twelve hours. You know, there's just, COVID changed the world and this is the world we live in now where there's lots of options. And in my opinion, like I, I, well, that's not even my opinion, I shouldn't have said it like that, but what I'm typically doing, I'm coming down every morning, checking things out and then coming back later and checking email. And if there's, if, if y'all don't feel like that's enough, just understand there's nobody coming in here, zero. Um, Daniel would tell you that too. I mean, he's here all day in town and one time he's asked, had somebody stop and ask if he knew, if they knew when it would be open, it was to pay a fine, he called me, I beat him here. I mean, it's just where we are. Okay. So I said all that to say, just kind of wanted to give you the kind of a lot, a little rundown. So if you want to know how flex hours benefit an employee, here's what I want you to know. It makes us good workers because I don't have to sacrifice anything. I, when I retired, I was committed to my family. Flexible hours have allowed me to come down here and do exactly what I was meant to do. I have turned those books around and I'm patting myself on the back, but y'all, we've come a long way in a short amount of time and I'm proud of that. I think I'm good at it. Um, and I do, I want to continue to do it. So flexible hours have allowed me to do that, be a benefit to the town and to you guys. We've seen stuff we haven't seen in years by flipping all this over, but it's also made me a happy employee. I am able to take care of my kids, grandkids, I'm able to help with things in the town. I'm able to, like when I pay bills, I, I take them to the little people who are paying our bills and pay them, like take their checks personally to them, just have a conversation with them, you know? So little PR there. Anyway, flex hours are working for me. Um, and I feel like they're a benefit to the town because it's a benefit to me. Um, so anyway, what I'm going to propose to you guys is a savings nineteen thousand and two hundred dollars a year. Uh-oh. By continuing. Mitzi, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna pass Rogers this way. That's just a little rundown. Where we are now.
Actually, before you even know any further, it's saving a lot more than this because we were paying up to fifty-five hours of.
Right, right. My thing is I am not, I'm, I'm just not gonna work over forty because that's a regular work week and there's just not enough here to do now that court is gone. And your business license. Now, if we decide business licenses are changed, y'all have to, all y'all have to do is say to me, now look, it's business license time, you need to be down there three days a week all day long. I'll put it on Facebook and we'll go at it. I've got, this is, I like the not being so firm and just throwing it out there. You know, here's what we'll do and I'll do anything. If you guys can bring something to the table that the citizens are missing out on by me not sitting here eight to four, then talk about it, say it out loud. I mean, it's not gonna bother me, we need to figure out how to help them. That's what I'm here for. But if we go here right now, emails checking twice a day, twenty hours, I'm still gonna be doing that. Figuring up the mail, the mail daily. If I'm out for the entire day, I think I'm doing that now, but if not, that's a firm, I definitely will do that. I can transfer my, the phone, cell phone, the things we've already gone over. But if you go up to, um, the top, at twenty hours, the salary is like sixteen thousand. Insurance is seven. It's twenty-four thousand dollars a year. If you take away the no paid holidays and the no sick days, which I'm also willing to say, because if I'm not gonna be down here four hours a day, I don't need a sick day or a vacation day. I'll just figure that out. Then your total savings is nineteen thousand. But if you, if you're looking to fill a forty-hour week spot, then you're gonna be closer to forty thousand. And then if they, you know, there were weeks I had to work overtime to get in where we are now. So you just have to consider that. Okay. Now y'all can see that and then I know that at the end, we're gonna talk about that more. That's my story. Um, now, the second thing that I have is, have you guys that I don't know about, have you addressed the concerns that we talked about when we were in our meeting from April the eighth? Have you guys addressed some of those concerns that I'm not aware of? And I'll tell you why I'm asking, let me, let me go where I'm asking. So, um, the, the letter that y'all received, Rodney stated that he's not able to oversee business in the town, he's not gonna oversee the clerk, he's not gonna subject himself to speaking to me anymore, I mean, blah, blah, blah. It's the whole nine yards. But yet during this month, we're getting, why aren't you copying me on emails? Why aren't you sending texts to me? But I explained what was happening to me in the city hall. I explained all that to y'all. And if, if we've addressed it and things are gonna be different, then I, I'm okay with that. But right now the buffer is helping me.
Can I say something about that, Natasha? I mean, Natasha?
Sure.
First of all, what I said was I'm on the council seat. I am the providing officer of the council. I am the supervisor, overseer of all employees. And yet you're leaving me out of emails. And yet, you're leaving me out of emails and text messages? And I'm on the council, I'm the presiding officer. So, what's the explanation for that?
Um, I will not oversee the clerk, inability to oversee business of the town. I will not subject myself, and, I mean, we can pull that up and read the entire statement.
Well, yes. And the reason, the reason I said that is because of your actions to me. And as a result, I didn't, I didn't tell you to stay away from me. You told me to stay away from you. And, you know, and I, and I sent all, all the council an email and told them what happened. And I think you're, I think you're misreading what I said. It's the council, I'm on the council. That, and when I said that I was not gonna, I was not gonna be able to do it is because you would not do what I asked you to do. That's it. And that's when Chad Lee told us in here that night. He said, "Rodney, your hands are tied." He said, "You're the overseer of it." He said, "But they act, the clerk actually answered or hired by the council." And so, I, and so, I see it, I see it. I'm not getting anywhere with this, lady. You won't do what I tell you to do. I said you were insubordinate, and I said that you had obstructional behavior. And so, as a result of that, I had to turn it over to the council. I'm on the council. I wouldn't turn it over to just, for this, the, these five people. I'd turn it over to the council because I am on the council.
So, really and truly, what you said didn't mean anything because you're still.
Now, listen, what do you ask it to?
The council.
It's in me. And I'm, and I'm supposedly, in any other town, the, the, the mayor is the presiding officer, and I have to handle day-to-day operations. And I'm your supervisor. But you do it not do what I asked you to do. So, I said, "Y'all," I'm turning, and that's what Chad Lee told me. He said, "Your hands are tied." He told y'all, sitting right here himself, "Your hands are tied, Rodney. You got to get approval from the council." I sent everybody an email about that, right? Was there any action taken by the council?
Action such as what, Samantha?
Did you respond, then on words, what I said to y'all about what happened? Did y'all make any, I know we went into executive session and talked about it, right? We went in there, and y'all told me to handle it. And I said, "Okay." So, I sent out, I sent out, I sent out an email to everybody, not just the clerk, but I sent it out to everybody. And I said, and I used the word directive. And it was like, "Oh, my God, you're threatening me." I'm not threatening anybody, this, this is just a town, town business.
We, we did, we did go about, you know, handle it, but it did come across as, to me, very non-tactile.
Well, how would you say it, Trevor?
I would have verbally talked to them regardless. And I would have just said, "You know, this is the concerns." But that was just a true directive, here it is, or wham, bam.
Well, we talked about, we talked about all that.
We did discuss, but we didn't discuss how the process was gonna go out after that night. And then that next day.
I was told to handle it.
We were, we said, "Yes, okay, I agree with you." But it didn't come to us how you were gonna do it. And when you sent it out the next day, bold letters, black and bold, whatever caps, whatever it was, I sat there and read it, and I said, "As an employee, if I was his employee, I'd be a little perturbed about it." Because, I mean, here it is, is that do this, 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 do this.
And it was all business, everybody.
I'm not saying it wasn't business, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it was tact. It's not what I would have done.
Well, what, how would you have said, how long would you have waited?
First of all, me and my employees would have had a conversation a way that we can agree.
But you wouldn't even talk to them?
I'm not saying, I'm telling, you asked me what I would have done. I'm telling you what I would have done, I can't predict what would happen here, okay? I don't think I could have got, I don't think it would ever elevate it to that point. I'm not no, the best leader in the world either. But I feel like some more tactfulness could have gone along with that email.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know what you could say there, I don't know how you could say it. Please, maybe?
Please and thank yous go a long ways in life, to me.
Well, it would, but this was just pure business, pure business.
I think too, it was, it, it was the timing, okay?
Well, how long was I struggling with?
Well, I'm just saying that the timing and that three emails were sent, three directive emails were sent to her within an hour.
I said, "One of them's not a directive." I asked her to, to order me some egg cartridges.
That was a directive.
That's not a directive, I just asked her to do it.
But this, the parentheses after that said.
One would have just corrected tonight. They cut out, cut out this to me.
The parentheses after that said, "If we don't have any," which says, "I'm not gonna look, you gotta look and see if we have any and order them if we don't."
You told, you told me to order. And so.
But even that, that was okay, y'all. I came back, remember I said, I sent an email and said, "Hey, got these. All I'm saying is, let's sit down and talk about it." To Trevor's point, let's just sit down and talk about it.
Well, I wrote business cards.
Did not get anything back from him to sit and talk. So, well, then, that's when I included you guys again, and I said, "Hey, I've gone out here and I'm saying, 'Okay, council, help me.'" You, you know I did that, I sent it out and I said, "Help me with this." Then we come back in here, and there were things, and I told y'all all this, that I was keeping to myself because I just felt like things would get better. So, I was keeping them to myself. So, then we go into executive session, that's when I laid it all out. And I said, "Boom, here it is, I'm gonna lay it out and I'm not picking it back up again." Which is okay, I mean, like, I can do that. But right now, we are at a point of retaliation. That's where we are.
When, when you made the decision to bring up these tickets here, that happened back in January. Why did you bring it up when you did?
Right now, I covered up a lot of things for you, and I'm ashamed of myself for it.
Covered up what?
The use of town property for personal business, that's what that was.
And I was stupid enough to sit there and listen to you say, "Oh, go ahead, Rodney, you're the mayor."
Y'all never asked a clerk for permission. I mean, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying what you said. I didn't ask your permission. I was just stupid enough to listen to you. Because that's what you said to me. You said, "Oh, Rodney, you're the mayor, you can use that vehicle if you want to." And then, and here, here we are, January, February, March, we've done going through finances, you know, agreeing to the finances for January, February, March.
I understand, and, and shame on me, shame on me that I didn't. Shame on me that I didn't come to y'all and say, when he's about to buy a vehicle and he's gone and bought it before y'all know it, shame on me. I can keep going on and on, and shame on me. But once I looked at Rodney and I said, "I'm not covering up anything else." Well, then, all this, these directives, these pointed emails, this retaliation, this harassment starts, that's when I come to y'all. Multiple emails, and then an executive session saying, "Help me, help me. He's sitting at home watching me on a camera."
That is not true. I got proof of it, and anybody wants to see it, I can tell it to you. That camera right there, I mean, that's, those cameras went down in February. The guy came in here, changed out the, the server, and when it did, I couldn't see nothing. Says February, and I had no, I have no desire to be watching the clerk.
That's what I would say too, if I were in your shoes.
Well, I had no, I mean, first of all, it's, it's crazy. I, I don't, it's on that server up there, anybody can see.
Rodney, you told me twice that you were watching me, and I said, "Stop."
The first time, the first time we even said that, we were talking about while that guy was here. And I said, I used, I said, I used my, it's on my phone. They put it on there for me when they first put these cameras in. And I could see what's in here. But you can't see it, it ain't, you couldn't hear nothing, you can't see nothing. I told her, I told her, I told her that night, I said, "Of that day," I said, "Randy, I looked and I said, 'I wanna know if you're there or not, if I'm gonna come up there.'"
So, he was watching me on the camera, is what he's just admitted to, guys.
Listen, y'all.
This is what I'm asking of.
But I'm not, I'm not been listening, I have not been watching you. Don't flatter yourself to think that I want to see you. I don't.
He just admitted it, guys. Okay. Um, the other thing is, like, where I, why I'm using that word retaliation is because I have got text after text after text after text after text when I say, "Hey, I'm going in ten, hey, I'm going in eight, hey, I'm doing this, hey, I'm doing that." Until April the tenth, when all bets are off. And that's when he see it, says, "You gotta have regular hours." But prior to that, it's, "Oh, do what you need to, it's no problem, do what you need to." That is a form of retaliation because it comes immediately after. Just like y'all said, we go into that session and we, he starts saying, "Oh, let me fire the clerk, let me fire the clerk." And I come to y'all and say, "Ooh, wait a minute, before y'all do that, let me tell you what I'm going through there." That's when it starts, that's when all this retaliation starts, started with the car. But, anyway, um, I, I think at this point, what I brought up and what I'm saying to you guys is, I just need to understand if you guys have taken what I've told you and taken it seriously enough that you've had a conversation about expectations because I am the town clerk and I work at you guys' pleasure. And I will do anything that you ask me to do and no problem doing it. But before you ask that, please take into consideration where the position that you're putting me in, and right now, there's a little buffer there. And it's a fantastic place to be, I'll be honest with you. It, for me, it's been great.
We're, we're going to, again, we're going to cover that when we get down into this right here, okay? Oh, anything else? Okay, right there. All right, under the new business, um, Christie had asked to put on the, on the agenda about senior center and office space. And I emailed y'all all a copy of what Terry Aka, our granddaughter, said.
Yeah.
And he deals, he deals with, he deals with Adeka.
All right. Um, and I appreciate you sending that and giving the information so that we don't do anything wrong because we are very appreciative of the beautiful center that we have now. Um, we, it was a long time coming, and it was much deserved for all of our senior citizens. Um, and so, I understand that now it's considered all of the, the senior, the senior center. So, would it be permissible to rent those three office spaces to benefit the senior center?
No. Because that's what they say. That money that was spent, that four-hundred-thousand dollars to do what they did up there was done under a grant for Adeka. The reason we got that grant, we would have never got that grant had we not qualified through the low income for the seniors to rent. That's how we even got that four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. And it was not done, it was done for the renovation of the senior center, it wasn't done for the town to, to use to make money off of.
Right. And I don't, and so, I, I, I understand that. Um, and I don't, like I say, I do not wanna do anything to jeopardize our grant and the appreciation that we have for that. But if, if the money is, is circling back into the senior center, it would not be town profit. It would be for the senior center to be more sufficient.
Yes, and there's other problems with that through East Alabama because you can't, you only got restaurants there for that, you know? For this, and this Popee for that, and you got food being served back there. There's all kind of reasons why that, that it won't work that way. And that's what he said. He said, "We cannot do that." If you do, he said, "You can, you're gonna jeopardize having to pay some money back on this grant, four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant."
And that's Terry Aka?
Yes, Terry Aka.
And who is it with East Alabama?
Um, it's Amanda Bangers, Lori Sokel, and Michael Marson. Michael, Michael was gonna be here, Marson. He was gonna be here tonight, but he said, he said he was missing this afternoon, he said that he was sick, wasn't gonna be able to make it. He was gonna be here. Any questions?
Um, and the other thing that I wanted to say about the senior center is, um, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that nobody on this council, I think I can speak for everybody on this council, nobody on this council has any plan or desire to close the senior center down. Um, that was, um, that statement was misconstrued and told inappropriately. Um, what I had discussed was seeing if we can get the senior center better. I mean, we've got this beautiful facility now, and if we can make it better for the seniors and more efficient. Um, so, that was the, that's what I had said, but then it was turned into, um, that it might wanna be shut down, and that is not what anybody intends to do. I mean, it's a beautiful facility, it's, it's a service that's been going on, I think, since nineteen ninety-three. And it would be crazy for anybody to think about not serving our seniors. So, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
So, in the effort, Christie, I, I have been, you know, I've just been going, going, going through all the senior center manual, the contract, just trying to research and see where we could find some areas that, honestly, that we could just improve on. And I, I guess I just need to talk to all of you guys and make sure, I, I wanna, here's where I wanna go with this, um, and I'm just gonna let you know. But I am the designated program administrator. So, with that being said, what I'd like to do is go in and just do an audit. Just an audit. Just say, "When are they making the first dip? When are they pulling back in? Who are we serving?" Like, we did that little map, you know? But let's go a step further, and those eligible, the, um, uh, application that those guys are turning in, let's look at those. Because, again, she's saying they have to be reevaluated every year. And what it says in our contract is that those things change so often that it might be that we would service people with a frozen meal instead of a hunk, just depending on their circumstances. We also have options to get them, like, their nutrition drinks, like, I'm just learning an awful lot that I didn't, I didn't take the time to do before we signed the contract in October. Y'all remember, we were under the gun to get that done, because it was just the timing. But, um, I mean, if y'all just nod your head that, yeah, go ahead.
What I would like to do on behalf of the council is to have East Alabama come here and tell us. Don't hear it from me. You know, don't hear it from just one person, let's hear it from them. I want them to tell you. They talked to me, and they said, "Well, you're doing," I mean, like, I know for, for facts, they will not deliver meals unless you got at least twenty-five. Okay, they will bring less than twenty.
We're double that, we're not even.
Well, yeah, we have over a year, we have done that. And, um, and I think we're doing a great job at it. And I think our, our times change from time to time. Like, for example, I think Tasha can tell you this. Tasha's a little girl.
She is.
Uh, she can tell you this, that we got changed. She, she's in contact with East Alabama on a regular basis, I'm not, but she is. And they, they told her, for example, the drivers had to change their schedule. They come all the way from Guntersville, Alabama. If you didn't know that, they come here from Guntersville, Alabama. We were last on the list as coming previously, but now they're first on the list coming. We're first on the list.
So, they get here, that's why you're changed to seven?
Yeah, that's reason how to change a town.
What time do they usually get here?
The, the workers, oh, the food. No, the food. No, the food normally gets here, it varies anywhere from seven-thirty to, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it daily, it's different.
When do they start dipping every day to serve, because the food goes into the containers, right?
Yeah, the food goes into the container.
What time do they start dipping to deliver?
At ten-thirty.
I think it's good to have East Alabama come, and I'm also one of those where I feel like that with Samantha being the administrator over, and that goes back to a couple of other city clerks before her, that, uh, having someone here, being able to go down hands-on type things and be able to help with East Alabama, or for East Alabama to help them, whatever else, to make sure the whole program is, is running smoothly. Because it seems to be a hot topic in several of our meetings here lately, and so I feel like it's something to address. So I like the idea of it, doing a local audit, or within, or what we call that.
So, East Alabama, uh, what would they, what would they go over with us, what would they?
What the rules, what their rules are, and what they have to do.
I would too.
Yeah, they, they could tell us that.
That'd be great.
I sat down with Lori Sokol, as a matter of fact, we brought her in here back when the previous clerk was here, we brought her in because there was a question about why our, uh, money was changed.
Yes.
It went from eighteen thousand dollars like first year to eight thousand next year, eight thousand next year, seventy-five hundred dollars last year, and now it's seventy-five hundred dollars again, and that's all you don't get.
Yeah.
You're not gonna get no more than that.
What was their explanation of why it was so much, and then now?
Because, because they told us that the reason that we were not getting was because the report was not being filled out correctly. That goes back to the previous clerk, and, you know, and, and I think that our current clerk is, you know, learning about that, about what to do, and, and Tasha is too, you know, they're in constant contact, Tasha's in constant contact with them all the time. The, uh, I think, I think, I think I might have got this, but Tasha has to have the clerk to do that report monthly. Other than that, Tasha is doing the talking, weekly, daily, whatever, to East Alabama. And so, that's her job.
Did they give you any pointers as to how to fill out the reports in order to get more money?
Just that one thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Which is the, um,
Transportation.
Transportation.
Or like, if I take, um, one of the seniors to the grocery store, or if I go to the grocery store for them, um, how to document that, and that's just to get the extra thousand dollars?
Yeah, because last year you only got sixty-five hundred, or sixty-five eighty-three, some, for the point of talking about it, it's sixty-five hundred, but this year, we are on target for the seventy-five hundred, but.
Yeah, previously, they changed it up too. When I first came in, they were doing it quarterly, they would send us a quarterly check, which would have been about eighteen hundred dollars, and then we would get from East Alabama. But now they don't do that, they didn't do it last year, and we had meetings and calls, and they don't tell me how many emails I sent, where's our money, where's our money?
I remember you saying, I remember you talking.
And Michael Marson, and Lori Sokol, and they were all involved in it, they got a clerk that handles that kind of stuff for payments. They got somebody that handles that, and so it has been a question ever since COVID did, it just changed. And so they're not getting as much money, they got so many service centers they got to, to split it up with. And as a matter of fact, when Lori Sokol comes to talk with myself and the, and the senior center manager and the previous clerk, they said that the reason they didn't do that, for that, the reason that it went down to seventy-five hundred dollars, because they were doing it across the board at ten percent, that's all you're gonna get. Our contract was for seventy-five thousand. The seventy-five hundred was subtracted, whatever, you subtract seventy-five hundred from that seventy-five thousand, the rest of that contract goes for the meals that they're bringing out here weekly for a year, for one year.
Wow.
Yes. They got a contract with a company in Gonerful, Alabama. And they use, that's what they go by, and they have rules and regulations.
Can we go to the next one?
They want?
Can we go to the next one?
Yes.
I've heard this four or five times.
Well, okay.
And I understand where we're at, but if we just talk about the same thing and audit over the senior center building, and we don't call them, come in and talk, and we agree about the rest of the place, thank you.
All right, good. Okay, Trevor had asked about, uh, the speed bump, the rec field, I sent y'all an email about that, what, what Lee SD said. Uh, it, it's not something permanent, he can move it around, anywhere he needs to move it, just dial it down to the uh, thing, he just needed the approval to go ahead and order it.
How much did you say it is?
I can't remember.
And do we pay for that, or is it great?
No, they pay.
Okay, I don't care how much it is then.
Yeah.
I don't care how much it is then.
I made a motion, I made a motion for a speed bump, big, big foot in.
Okay, guys, motion, we'll hear second.
Second.
Okay. All right, uh.
They called Russ.
Yeah, called Russ.
Josh?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Dennis, Christie, and Trepper?
Yes.
Okay, now the next thing, van for senior center. Uh, we went up and looked at that van, Tasha sort of found it, I guess it was on Facebook parking place, I'm not sure. But most of my surprise, when I get there, me and, and it was me and Tim Smith and Randy Hudson. Randy is our driver for the bus, you know, until we got rid of it. So he would, they all went with me to look at it. So we go over on Gresham Road, which is on the other side of eighty-five, but it's inside the perimeter. And you felt like you had to have a gun, you had to get it out. And we met this guy in a parking lot, and I called him and said, hey, we're here, he said, I'll be here in a minute, so he and his brother came. When he pulled up, I saw it had an Alabama with this tag on it. I said, where'd you get this? He said, from runoff, Alabama, from the senior bus. And he said, um, he said, I've got the title, I've got all the records rolling down, and so we looked at it, and he was willing fifteen thousand dollars, unless, he said he could negotiate that if we agreed to pay for the damages. And we found out what the damages were, or what it was, I don't know how much it is or nothing like that, because, uh, he, he told me, he said, we'll probably have it fixed before y'all make the decision. I told him, I said, well, I'd have to put this forward, council, anyway, I said, you know, we can't, I can't tell you something right now. And so when we got back, Josh called the clerk down, he knows the clerk, and so he called the clerk, and she said, well, we sold it seventy-five hundred dollars, the reason we sold it, there's nothing wrong with the van. Plus, the reason we sold it is because we got a grant that, um, for, to buy a new one, and she said the damage was caused because they backed over a fireplug. It's got seventy-one thousand miles on it. It's a little bit, uh, Randy, he's not here, but he said, first of all, he said, first thing he said to me, that's a little bit too high, fifteen thousand. But we found out they only paid like seventy-five hundred dollars, is that right?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three hundred dollars, so they're at the fifteen thousand, which in my opinion is too much, is too high, uh, for that van. Uh, Josh also, thank, thank, this, he talked with the clerk, she sent me an email of somebody to contact with the Department of Transportation out of Troy, Alabama, and she would help us with the grant, and it's coming up very soon, the grant, to get, to get a bus for the senior center, a new one. And when we do, I mean, you know how grants are, I mean, you, you apply, and you, you did it, whatever, and then there was, um, somebody else too, with a decker, that, that would help us, in other words, she sent me two things. And I sent it to both people, and they both come back and said, yes, we will gladly help you with that grant, we will help you do the grant, they said it's really an easy-peasy type thing to do, the clerk told us that, runoff. So I told the guy, he sent me a message, well, I sent him a message, I said, well, number one, we're gonna discuss this with the council to get approval, I said, but the, the title was signed on the back on the town runoff, but the buyer didn't sign it, and I looked at it and I said, well, why didn't y'all sign it? He said, we don't do that, he said, we just, he said, we just give it over, I said, so I sent him an email, when I got back home, he was texting, I said, look, I said, we, that's called title skipping, it is against the law to do that. And he knows that, a lot of other people know that, title skipping. And because we're municipal, we sure don't want to be breaking the law, so I told him, I said, we would have to have that in your, in your name if we consider fine, I said, but I'm not making that decision, the council has to make that decision. And so he texts me back and he says, oh, that's no problem, we'll put it in our name, and he, he said, um, we, and then sent me another text, and said, I, I have, the title transfer is in the mail to the state, and you know how long that takes, it might be three or four weeks or whatever. So we couldn't do anything, no matter, no matter what we do, as far as that van's concerned, we couldn't do anything until they get that title in their hand if we made a decision to buy that. I'm just looking for y'all, I want y'all to tell me what you want me to tell him, do we want to just back out of this? Because it's, it's two boys, and they, they're real nice guys and everything, and he said they do this all the time, that they buy stuff from municipalities now, and they turn around and try to, you know, flip it for some money.
Well, let's write, write a grant.
The, uh, little add-on to that, um, I went down and did some work for the city the other day and actually got to see the new van. It's a twenty-twenty-four, nice wheelchair, wheelchair accessible, it is nice, nice, nice. And they said they've got sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars in it.
That's what we've already attached.
So, yes, in my opinion, it would be foolish to throw fifteen thousand dollars at a vehicle that's ten, fifteen years old, whether it's a good vehicle or not. If we have opportunity to apply for this grant, every two years you can apply for this grant, uh, for LeFley, um, and only have sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars in, in, in a vehicle uh, that would, that would service us for a long time, and then we can turn around and sell it, so probably for what we got in it later on.
Find him again, so.
Have him get a title too.
Yeah, and, you know.
Yeah, there's cause on that, in my book.
Yes.
Y'all, y'all will just say that we don't want to do that.
Yeah, you said, I'm even on the caption.
Let's write a grant, and if you, I mean, I'm sure you're able.
Well, so that gonna help us with the grant.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help anything I can do as far as writing the grant, or whatever I can do, because I think that'd be.
Well, when we, when we get to the grant, what they said, they, they would automatically tell me immediately that the grant is open to do. And when they do that, when I get that, I'd like their help on that.
I'm happy.
I'd like for us to sit down, they said they would do it for us, and not, not have to worry about, you know.
Yeah.
But we just have to get it approved and that kind of stuff, but it's not open yet, it's still an open deal right now, and they said it's coming up very soon. And it was really good that I contacted them about that.
That's good.
So I think that's, that's sort of what I thought too, so let's go to the next thing. Uh, the garden club, uh, as far as appropriations for, under the public purpose doctrine, which we got to do that if we agreed to pay them a portion of amount of taxpayer dollars.
So could we do that at the next meeting?
Um, well, we could, we can do it then, we're gonna try, if we, all we gotta do is just come up with a figure of how much we want to give them. I don't know why we would want to wait.
She's talking about the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing, yeah, if we would do the public hearing, whatever we agreed to, to say, you know what I'm saying, we set, we set an amount. We can have a public hearing, we have to post it, that kind of stuff, you know, saying that we're going to do that. And then once the public hearing is done, it's done. Now we, all we got to do is just approve it, and we can approve that amount now. And once we have the public hearing, and nobody objects, because it is public, money being paid, then we can say, okay, we, it's done.
So you need the time to throw out the mail.
Yes, uh-huh.
I'd like, I'm, I'm looking at a thousand bucks, she's starting on, I'd say give them a thousand dollars, because I can remember years ago, the pots and the ceramic things, I actually looked at them, and they
Oh, completely.
really did take care of them, and I know that the club is dwindling in members, keep up a little bit on Facebook, but, um, I say, we give them a thousand dollars, we have that open public meeting at the next meeting, I'm gonna throw that about out. Somewhere to start.
Come on, General Fund, great.
Yeah, come on, General Fund. Professor Primes.
We have a motion that we.
I'll make a motion that we, after having a public hearing, it's approved by us and the public, whatever, that we allot them, or whatever, earn you a million, a thousand dollars to the garden club.
Okay.
I second it.
Got a second?
Josh?
Um, I come with a very specific thing in mind with coming on here. Um, and that was no appropriations of any type until we get a budget. The town needs a budget, and I'm gonna, um, with that being said, I think that the garden club is great, I think they need the money, I think the thousand dollars is great. But I will not do any appropriations to get a budget, I'm not, I'm not willing to.
So we already, my, before you come in, we might want appropriation of six thousand.
I understand that, I would have voted the same, I would have, I would have said no to that also. Uh, even if they meant it, I understand it's a great thing, and I don't want y'all to think it's not. And if we have a budget in place, I would say yes, and we'd say, go forward with it, but if we don't have a budget, I think it's irresponsible for us to give out money, that whether we think it's there or not, until we know, it's not responsible to give taxpayers money out. I mean, we gotta have a budget, gotta have one.
And what's working on there, get there?
Um, no for now.
Yes. Mitzi's a yes.
Yes, she said yes.
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
And Dennis?
Yes. Okay, all right. The next thing on here is driveway pipe and, and drainage ditches. We, in the past, that's what I've been aware, and I talked with Chuck for, for, you know, about the past, and, and, uh, the question, we have never, ever paid somebody to replace a, a, I mean, a driveway pipe, okay? Over the years, it's just been done. The height was done, and it wasn't paid for city type money. Chuck said, we don't do anything. But then, he said, we just didn't do anything. Well, the way I've done it since I've been in here, I've asked like, to clean out a ditch, you know, just to clean out a ditch, or clean out a a driveway pipe or something. I've asked for help, and Terry Butler, Cresson, come up here, did it, we never got charged. Uh, even Lee SD's, the county, did it until now, it's changed. They now, we have a memorandum of understanding that we saying we have to pay them for anything they do. Uh, so, top of that, I, I start up, I thought, well, how in the world are we gonna do this, because what happened on this particular driveway back, and, uh, uh, Lee SD says, I'm not touching it, uh, Terry Butler says, I don't, I don't have the ability. Uh, Terry Butler says, I don't, I don't have the ability to make it like the property wants it. And they told me to get in touch with Tommy McCloud. So I got in touch with Tommy McCloud. Tommy come up there and we met with the one that was wanting. And we said, uh, we talked, and I said, whatever we do, whatever we decide, I said, it'll have to go before the council to be approved. Well, then, uh, I'd also been asked by Wilma Green about that. And uh, Tommy told me while we was down there, he told me, he said, Rodney, you fixing up up the can of worms here, buddy. He said, you can't afford to pay me to fix up by a ditch. So I called around, I called, first place I called, Weedow, and I talked to Tim Coe. And I said, do y'all have any kind of policy or anything about that? And he said, thank goodness, they had something in place. It was a resolution that was done before I got here. And he said, all we do is, is that we will, it's in our resolution that we will pay to put in one pipe uh, for new construction only, to be able to get to your money. And he said, I said, well, what about fixing ditches and that kind of stuff and manicuring the yard to make it to where the property wants it? He said, no, absolutely not. We don't have enough money to do that. I called, uh, I called Donna Kay over at Wadley. She said, we have nothing in place. I called Robbie Brown at Heflin. They have nothing in place. He said, we just don't do nothing. And so that's what Chuck was saying. He said, if we don't do anything, we can't afford it. We can't afford to fix everybody's ditch. Uh, if we have to clean out a ditch or something like that, yes, we, I could pay Terry Butler, I could pay, the town could, I said the town, not me. But the town could pay Terry Butler to clean out a ditch if we, if we want to do that. But as far as manicuring a ditch, we would be setting precedent if we agreed to that. I have a guy. He said, Tommy, Tommy sent me, thank God, I asked him to send it to me. And uh, so he did, and uh, back here. And it's for, um, I can bring it to you, let you see. It's for twenty-three hundred and forty dollars, not a passion, I don't know what y'all are saying. But I specifically have said all along, I can't do anything without the council approval. I don't think everybody's telling me, we do not need to set precedent and fix one place and then be on the hook for anybody else to come down the road and say, oh, you did that one. So we don't, you don't need to be, you know, why, why ain't you doing mine?
I don't think I understand what you're meaning.
Well, what they're saying is, and the county, oh, by the way, the county has got a pipe, uh, policy. There's basically the same, ain't that right, Terry? It's basically the same as the, and I pulled it up. Anybody can look at it. It's on their county commission webpage about, um, about the roads. You go down there and there's a link to driveway pipes and all. That's what they do. That's what the county does. They'll pay for one pipe to put in.
That's not right.
What?
That's not right. The individual has to pay for the pipe, but then we'll install it. But we'll install it to our specs, not the person that owns the property. You have to pay for the pipe, but we'll install it. But that's like new construction now.
Yeah.
I mean, are we having a lot of people ask for this?
Yeah. We've had two. And what I'm saying is, and that's what they're telling me. And that's what Tommy was saying. He said, you can't afford to fix everybody's ditch. If we fix this ditch, we're setting precedent. Will you fix that ditch? I won't mind fixing. It's like with, with, uh, Wilma, she's been asking me for the longest about fixing that. Now, I've had, uh, Lee Estes come over here and clean out the ditch one time, you know? And if the driveway pipe's messed up, it is actually messed up. But the town didn't put that in. Robert Pollard put that in. Him sale. The town didn't pay for that pipe that went under her driveway.
Where does this lady live? Where does the Wilma train live?
Right at the end of the street down here. Mike Williams' old house, where it lived, where it lived, right there. When you go up, somebody hit that doggone pipe and it broke it underneath the concrete. And to fix that, you'd have to tear that concrete up, put in a new pipe. And that's the reason why, when I talked to Chuck about it, I said, what, what y'all done? And I even talked to Pambo. Because a new Pambo would know. And she said, no, we had, we had no policy. We just didn't do it. Because we couldn't afford to do it. And that's the problem. If you set precedent and you do one.
So I thought Terry Butler did that.
No. No, uh, he went down there and looked at, he's the one that come to me and said, we can't, I can't do this. He said, I think you need to call Tommy McCloud, cause he's in, he's in the landscaping business and he retired. But he did it from all the dumb as well, or Villa Rick or where it was for years, fifty years. And so Tommy looked out gracious part on his part, he came down and met with me and the one that was for it. And we discussed that. But we also, I told him first, I said, look, I I'd have to put forth to council whatever, whatever we decide. I can't make that decision. But that's what we're doing. And all I'm telling you is that everybody is telling me that we do not need to set precedent. And the county don't do that. The county's not gonna pay you, fix up.
So are you recommending we don't pay that?
Yes.
Well, I don't think that would be right. Because we can't fix something and then say, oh, by the way, you gotta pay. We should have said, we can't do it.
All we do is clean out ditches.
No, but we should have said that before we got the fat bill.
Well, I said, that's the answer.
He had no.
You haven't done that work.
That's just a mess.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant that was a bill that had been done.
He's addicted to that.
That's disgusting.
Yeah, it has not been done. And all I'm saying is that we need to be sure and make sure that we don't set precedent here.
Is the, um, problem solved? With that driveway? That solved? It hasn't been done.
It hasn't been done. But that's what I'm saying. You don't want to be changing out pipes and you don't want to be making.
I looked at it today while I was scraping, had been taking up the topic.
Terry did some work on it. And, um, it, it's not necessarily the ditch or the pipe, it's the runoff. It's the side of the road, like it's not the, you know.
Chuck and I had two issues. This highway that runs this way a couple of years ago with two different ladies on that road. And what we done, all Chuck would do was, would get the county to clean out the ditch. That was it, by hand.
Yeah.
And.
Well, the issue.
The shoulder. That's what the word I'm looking for.
Shoulder.
The button.
Shoulder.
Shoulder.
Yeah, there was, there was a couple of issues going on there. There is a gas line, not in the ditch, but up next to the road. And that's the reason why Lee Estes, I don't want to touch it. There's a gas line under there. And he said, my guy, I'd probably make it worse than what it is. And he said, so I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I'm not gonna do that. And so he, so I went to Terry. And that's what I had done in the past about cleaning out a ditch. And I took him over there, we met, talk. He said, he said, well, I'll see what I can do. Then he come back to me and he said, I can't do it. You need to call Tommy McCloud. I had never actually even thought about that until Tommy told me that. He said, you fixing up up the can of worms right here. This town can't afford to pay me to fix everybody's ditch. And that's all I'm saying is that we, in my opinion is, this is just my opinion, we do not need to set precedent.
What caused the damage that's causing the problem? I guess that's.
Just, just your drainage. Now Tommy, Tommy said, while we were over there looking at it, he said that when you cut them with a zero turn or something like that, it will, and because of the fact that the, uh, that treatment that, um, the gas people, spire, had done what they done and probably that had some effect to it. He said, but cutting with zero turn in a ditch like that will cut it off. And when you do, he said, that's the reason why that it's breaking off right here, what you're talking about. It was like, it was like it was a roaming, you know? So they're just saying it's not the town. The town should not do that, is what they're saying. You don't need to set precedent. I'd love to be able to do it. But I just, I mean, we got to answer to the, to the people of this town. And if we go do it for one person, then somebody else will go say, well, you did it for them. You go do it for me. And we would be setting precedent if we agreed to pay this right here. So we got to, the next question was about what Tim told us, probably what y'all need to do is just do a thing, an ordinance or whatever. But they, but it didn't happen that way. And so and so when, when he, uh, he said, you know, he told us that we just can't do it that way. So anyway, he said, he said, if you do do that, he said, keep in mind, he said, we're running this way down. He said, we do replace one pipe. One pipe only for new construction only. He said, but you can get into a situation where you got, because of the contour of the land, you're gonna put in some big expensive pipe. You know, you don't think about that kind of stuff till it happens. And he said, that's the downside of having a resolution as to what you would do in a situation with driveway pipes and ditches. He said, that probably was not, he said, even though it was in place when I got here, you know, that's what we do. But he said, I'm not sure that that's not a good, not, not the thing to do. You know, he said, maybe you don't need to have anything. It'd be just like Chuck said, don't do nothing like Robbie Brown says. We don't do nothing. We don't have a resolution. Nothing, which doesn't mean nothing, because we can't afford it. Does that make sense? So is everybody in agreement that we do not need to, uh, to, uh, have any kind of resolution? That we not pay this to cause precedent?
I think just try to continue to work with Terry and whoever else locally that can help. They'll do all they can.
Well, they do, like.
I mean, they've been doing that. I understand that.
They do come out. I've asked Terry on this street right here. People throw their leaves and everything else in that ditch. And it's really their responsibility to, to doc do that, you know, I'm sort of crazy that they do that, but they do do it. And that's why Wilma thinks drives back there. So anyway, I, I think we need to approve not doing nothing because of precedent. The next.
Or something for, or some type of ordinance or resolution, saying something of the nature, if it's a, I don't know, necessarily for new construction. Cause what's considered new construction? Is that a?
That's a new house.
Is that a lock and key or is that a new construction on a building that I'm putting up beside my house and I want a road paved into it? Or not paved into it, but I want a drainage pipe put into it.
Well, see, they got, like, the county has got a form that you fill out. And it says on there that if you, that you gotta go through Lee Estes. Lee Estes will want to make a decision whether or not they can do it or not. Because they got to look and see if they got the money to do it. You know, and he makes that final decision. That's the way they do it.
Later. He also, you have to go to him and he tells you what size pipe.
Yeah.
And all that, because you gotta have an engineer to say, okay, this is the drainage and this is what it's gonna take. We have a lot of people in the county that goes and gets them a plastic pipe at Home Depot and sticks it in there. And if it causes a problem, we just rip it out. Cause we do have a lot of them, yes.
Right. So I think we need to I don't know whether they do a revolution or not. You know, cause it don't need to be an ordinance. It needs to be a resolution. Ordinance is the law.
I thought you said it's been better not to even do anything.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we need to do anything. But Trevor said, he said something about us doing a ordinance or resolution.
Nah, I took that from you. I didn't say bring it up. I said, I took that from you.
Okay.
I wouldn't think about a resolution for fixing ditches. I, I didn't think that would be a, a reason to have a resolution.
That's the reason why we've never done it in the past. I'm just saying that we just.
I said, we just keep, continue to help and assist, call local people, help, you know, someone calls up here and says, listen, this is helping my ditch. Y'all, anyway, well, we can, and we can get in touch with such and such or whomever. You know, we'll do our best.
Right.
And that's all we can do.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody agree with that?
Can I say one thing, Rodney?
Yeah.
I don't know what y'all's right of ways are, but you can't do anything off the right of way.
Yeah, I know.
If the ditch is off the right of way, it's not your problem.
Forty feet from center line, it's ridiculous, eighty feet. Or on the town streets.
If the county is, uh, if it's off the right of way, no matter if it's a ditch or a tree or whatever, we can't touch it.
Yeah, he's, he's correct. It's gotta be right of way that we're talking about here. And yes, we do have right of ways.
All right, who's next?
Okay, let's go with that.
Okay.
So we're not gonna do that. All right. The next one on, uh, approved repairs to Georgia Avenue and Turnaround, Miss Annie's Drive and the Trud Avenue. We have actually, I mean, I think we're doing the proper thing by, by the council approving this because the only reason I even consider anything is because we initially approved the two hundred forty-five thousand dollar grant that we got right back up the morning. It just came down to the question of how do we use any leftover monies? A DCA requires that we do what we did. I got, I got some, you know, things for the, you know, I guess, estimates to do it. Forty-two thousand dollars. Luckily, when it was brought up about Trud Avenue, somebody complained. I have no idea who it was. But anyway, when I met with him, I met with him that day. Just luckily, he was in the area and he came over to meet with him. And he said, I digged all day. He said, to help you in the town out, he said, will we do this over here on, on Georgia Avenue? He said, we gotta dig that up and then we gotta put down new asphalt to fix that dimp in the road. Okay? He said, we'll do that. And he went down to, uh, down to the, uh, Trud, uh, Miss Annie's Drive and that has done their best since day one.
Now, is Miss Annie's Drive, is that the name of the, the road?
The road, yeah.
Okay, cause I'm thinking.
That's where, that's where Susan's.
Annie Gettys is all right. You know, we'll get Bruce eyes.
It's about behind Bruce eyes. When he's turned, when you turn on the street right there, it's Del and he drive. But then he turns into Miss Annie's Drive. And I didn't realize that. But he also said that what he would do is, like, even though he's gonna fix that down during that turnaround, he's also going to fix any potholes between there and Georgia Avenue. Cause there are a few potholes there. He said, while we're there, we'll just, as a group entity, we'll just fix those potholes. So that, and then on the Trud Avenue thing, he come up there and looked at it and he said, we can fix that. He says, it's gotta be built up a little bit, cause it, it's been paved. He says, it's got to be built up a little bit because it, it's been paved before. They've even put concrete down in there, whatever, and there's a hole, there ain't no doubt about that. And, uh, he said, I can fix that and I won't charge the town another dime, it won't cost y'all anything. He said, because it'll give us opportunity to, to use the stuff that we dig up, you know? The mileage, we don't have to ta, we have to take that somewhere and dump it. And he said, so we can use that right there and I can fix that where it's right from there. So we're lucky for that right there.
And what's this going to cost us as a town?
Forty-two thousand, but that's, that's just, that's for everybody, that's fixing.
But that's from the grant.
Yes.
That's not costing the town.
It's not costing the town.
We've got twenty-two thousand.
In a grant.
We have, we have forty.
We're not going to take forty-two thousand out of our street fund to pay that.
No, wait, wait.
Yes, it comes as a grant. But it, that's granted to us.
That's a grant, yeah.
The grant went into the street.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Two forty-five, okay, all right.
Okay, so before we move on, let me explain to y'all because there's not enough money in that street fund to pay this. And, and it should be that there is money left, there should be. But that street fund is what we use to pay the street lights. So anyway, I'm, like, I went back and, you know, I can, I can show you all the documentation of it. I don't think we've done anything wrong, but put the check in the wrong account to start with. I think it should have gone in Rebuild Alabama. Because I went back and pulled a resolution from twenty-three and it says, um, Town Rev, da-da-da, awarded in Rebuild Alabama Act grant funds. So I think that's where it should have gone. So I don't know, honestly, I don't know what the rules are, I don't know if we just now pay it out of Rebuild Alabama. I don't know how to fix that. So I'll just reach out to MDA.
What happened, what happened in the past about that is that in the past, we paid the streetlights out of the special streetlight fund. We had to take money and this goes back, Pambo, all the way back. There was never enough money in that fund to cover the streetlights. So what they did was they would take money out of that, out of the general fund, transferred out of the general fund to pay that extra. That was, oh, it might not be, you know, that could might be six hundred dollars or four hundred dollars or whatever. That's the way it has been. When Robert Nelson, our engineer, contacted me about it, he said, we need to, we need to put that money into the street fund. Then they were going, the way they worked it out with the county was, the county was the one who was in contact with the contractor that does the paving and that kind of stuff. He said, what we'll do is, well, when you get the check, you put it into the, the street fund. And that's what he told me, to put it in the street fund. And he said, then, whenever they, the contractors sent, have them boys, and they have, I sent two. One was for the paving and one was for the striping. And some other maintenance that they did, you know, trying to make things right about Frank Leibler. We paid out a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars to the county and the county reimbursed. We, we gave that to the county, the county paid.
So how much is in the street fund?
Street fund?
Yeah.
What did I tell y'all? Let me grab that straight.
I think the number should be like thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
All right, forty-two ninety, forty-two thousand, okay, all right. So you're saying there's not that much in there right now?
No, there is, that we have forty-two thousand in there right now.
And we need forty-six to do this?
No, it was forty-six left after we made our payments, so it's at forty-two.
So about four thousand of it has gone to paying street lights and other stuff.
So we still have enough.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have enough.
Okay.
Uh, if we get out of this on that, and he told me, said, you probably will be. Because it's coming through a DCA. He said, what you'll do is that you just say, look, we got this much, two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. We spent this much right here, this, this much right here, and then you're going to spend, and we got approval through a DCA saying that it was okay to do these projects right here. That's the reason why I'm just saying that I think we're doing the correct thing by approving this by the council. So do I have a motion that we approve this forty-two thousand dollars to, to fix the problems that everybody's dropped about? And has complained about or whatever?
I make a motion.
Got a vote, they're second.
Okay, hold on, just one second, let me get it down. But we're going to pay the street lights from now on out of the special street fund, correct?
You can't, you can't pay it out of the special street fund.
No, we got, we got a credit card like we have in the past out of the general fund.
Into the street.
Yes. It's just a cost to the town, it's just, uh, something that we have to pay monthly, it's a recurring bill.
You made a motion?
Okay, yeah, I got the motion and the second. And then Josh, me, Ceez, Rodney.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Christian Trevor.
Yes.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is precision on price for all the police departments. There have been some talk and what I understand, I know I got in touch with Josh's boss or whatever, who he works for. They are in the position of making an offer to us. And he mentioned something like twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for a place. But then I was told that possibly there was a question about bidding. We can bid, there's no problem with that, we can bid it out, especially, one of the things that the league is saying that you have to bid it out if it's, uh, a council member that's involved in it. And I, I was told that you said, that told me about the interest that they'd bid on the building. And if that's true, then yes, if, if you want to do that, if you want to make a bid on that building, we just need to know. And then, and then we would go through the process of what we'd have to do, you know, by going through Chad Lee, making sure that we were handling this correctly by, by doing this. And, and we can make a decision, we can make that decision of what we want to do. But it's just a matter of how you will go about that, do you want to bid it out? Do you want to, do you want to go with their, their offer?
I guess my first question is.
We can't take their offer because it has to go under a bid.
Yeah, that, I, I think to be like totally fair with the town, it should be a closed bid.
Yeah.
Right.
Whoever wants to bid on it, bid on it. And at the next council member meeting, open those closed bids and see who's got the highest bid and make a decision if you want to sell it or not. I mean, that's, that's the only fair way that I.
The only fair way and rather than most.
Yeah.
Kinda. You heard me to come on to the, uh, the council at this time, but the, uh, that's the only way to do it, you know, and be fair.
So I, I talked to my pal about it. Um, I call her my pal because we've had a couple of pals. Um, and she told me, she said, Kristy, I don't know about, um, if it can even be sold. And so she said, look, look in the, look back in the minutes. And anyway, we found this, um, back in, now, I know everybody knows, my roots go all the way to the core of the earth from Ramburn, Alabama. Um, this is back in nineteen fifty-nine. Um, the following members were present, A. Cook, who was the mayor, Albert Hare.
Your great-grandpa?
Who's?
Mine.
Your great-grandpa? Ray Wiggins, Alton Pollard, Cecil Butler, and Harvey Hyde as councilmen. Um, the following business was transaction, was transacted, the minutes of the meeting, da-da-da. Okay, a motion was made by Ray Wiggins and seconded by Alton Pollard to rent the building from Cecil Butler at fifteen dollars a month for City Hall. All members voting yes. Um, then, um, oh, listen to this, this is great. A motion was made by Cecil Butler and seconded by Ray Wiggins to get a telephone for the City Hall with a light fixed to come on when the phone rings, high-tech. So that the policeman might not, might be able to know the phone is ringing from different points. All of the members voted yes. I love that. Um, and then later on, um, let's see, this was all the same people. A motion was made by Harvey Hyde and seconded by Alton Pollard to buy the lot from Cecil Butler for two hundred and fifty dollars to build the City Hall. All voting yes, and the motion carried, that's where City Hall used to be, at the police department. Um, and then go on over and the next one is on the ninth of November in nineteen fifty-nine, the same people. Um, a motion was made by Albert Hare and seconded by Alton Pollard that the town in Ramburn borrowed five thousand dollars from the Bank of Hefflin to build the City Hall and other necessary improvements. All members voted yes and the motion carried. Um, five thousand dollars in nineteen fifty-nine was a whole lot of money. Um, but I just kind of thought it was interesting to look back as, as to where we've come with it. And even to see is, is everybody here or all six council members even want to sell it at any price?
I, I, this is my personal opinion. There's, there is a lot of, um, historical value to it, it could be used for other things. We could set up a little library down there or something like that, I, I thought about that. We have, we are now using the basement for store and Christmas stuff and, and also police stuff in the basement. Um, the rest of it is just junk up there, it's just leftover from the past or whatever. I think it has historical value, it's got a plaque on the front of it. Um, it would have to be some work done to it, obviously, because it is sort of, on the outside, sort of falling in. There is no question that the property belongs to the town, there was a question about that. It is right on the, I'm talking about buildings, it's right on the land. Uh, and also the, the, the land itself is just very, very minimal.
Yeah.
You don't even.
I don't think it says.
It's not, it's not even, not even a paper. So that's just my personal opinion, I, every time I look at that, I think, you know, that thing been here since nineteen fifty-nine.
Um, it was, um, it was to be twenty-eight feet by thirty-two feet. So, um.
And that thing is rock solid. I know there was some concern about sand about that, you know, about it crack falling in and all that kind of stuff. Well, I promise you, you can go down there and beat on with a hammer, that dog goes floors that thick in concrete. And we had the jail down there, I don't know how much it cost to put that jail in down there.
A thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Eighteen fifty.
I saw we can open it up for a bid, we don't have to, we don't want to.
Yeah, right, I'm just, I'm not, listen, I'm not against.
I don't follow it.
Whatever we want to do, whatever the majority wants to do, I'm with it.
Um, how would we, um, how would we get the word out? I like your idea, Josh, I mean, that's as fair as you get.
Yeah, that's, that's the only way to do it, really.
Well, right now, the only thing we got is a webpage and, and, and social media, on the town Facebook page. I don't see if there's a problem with that, you know, doing that, putting that back in, we're accepting bids on the old police department if we want to do it that way. If we even want to sell it. Well, we, we didn't make the decision on John Dunbar or anybody that would want it, you know? I think that, I think he's saying the right thing, but we also need to make a decision whether we want to or not, period.
Speaking as an interested party in it, it does not matter to me if it's that building or if it's, I mean, the Seasons building just opened up. We've looked at four of the buildings in Hefflin, we've looked at some and, I, it's just to the point where it's, it's costing my company money not to have an office close to my house. Um, and that's, that's what it is. Uh, now, what that looks like as far as the police station, that was just the only building that was halfway decent, that was vacant. Um, and if there would be some work put into it, it wouldn't fall in. I mean, that's, uh.
Yeah.
So.
I say you open it up to a bid, it gives us thirty days to think about it till we're down to the next meeting and we come in here with a sound, hey, majority don't want to sell, majority don't sell.
We can reject it, whatever, yeah. Bid that come in high enough for what you think and, you know, not sell.
Don't sell.
Okay, well, uh.
I think it's fair enough.
I did, I think it's fair.
Well, I'd like somebody to help me do the wording on the, you know, to post on the Facebook page or, or even on our town website of how you want to say that. You know, to say that we're going to open up bids or, and then, and then after we get the bids, whatever, we can decide whether we want to sell it or not. Is that what, what we're saying here?
Yeah, time makes up a bid for next day, next day.
I think the word consideration should be used, like, we could no-sell it.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, there's ways of, whether to do that stuff for a no-sell, it's up to the seller to decide a no-sell or not.
Okay, so we'll do that, okay? You'll help me with that?
I will, basically, it'll make me a little bit nauseated to word it, but I'll help you with it. I feel like I'm selling it, I feel like I'm selling myself.
Rodney.
Yeah.
There is a legal way of doing that, you need to call the league of municipalities and they can tell you how. Because it is, it is taxpayer money.
It is, yeah, okay.
When we sell some, we got a whole procedure we have to go through, like, to even open it up to bids. And then you gotta put it in so many locations and so many newspapers and, I mean, there is a legal definition of a way to do it.
You can't just place it on the basis of personal, just like.
We just get in touch with the league.
I will, I'll take that.
Then we'll go from there, it may not be the next meeting, it could be two or three meetings.
We'll move on to the next one.
Yes.
All right. According to the lead manual, it is up to the council or the mayor, if the council doesn't do it, to set a work schedule for the clerk. And so the, to be full time, you got to work thirty-two hours. For us to be able to pay benefits, okay? That's what we're agreeing to. Uh, my opinion is that we need to set a schedule, the council needs to do it, either the council or myself. Now, I myself, this is just my opinion about this because in the past, it doesn't make no difference if one person come through that door or if eighteen people come through that door a day. The public needs to know when the clerks going to leave here. And I'm sure there was times, even one time, I'm going back to find us, way back. That she sat there every day and that might, not, not, nobody come in. But at least the public knew when the clerk was going to be there. My proposal is, this is just my per, my personal proposal, to do an ordinance like that, and you have to do an ordinance. And, and to do that ordinance, we'd have to get Chad Lee to do it for us, uh, to say what we agree for that work schedule to be. So either, like I said, the council can set this, and if you don't, then the mayor, that's what it says, the mayor is the one that sets it. I think that, like any other business, people need to know when they can come in this door. I don't care if, if the clerks sitting up here, like they have in the past, not doing anything. One person come in or will there be ten people come in? In the past, since I've been here, in the past, all the previous clerks now, they were people coming in here all the time for all kind of reasons. They came in here for, to get a note. Our previous clerk was a note, our present clerk is not a note. They came in here to use the fax machine because they did not have email and that kind of stuff. Be older people or whatever, come in and they say, would you fax this for me? And we did it as a service. But now, that fax machine went cut off. And that's not old school. That, that is not old school to say that, uh, we don't need. That, that is not old school to say that, uh, we don't need a fax machine. You know, that, that's just things that happened in the past. I am the only one now, if somebody comes through that door and wants a notary, I'm the only one that can do it. And so, I might not be here or something. So I have to get with that person, and, and I've done it. I've, I've never turned one person down. I've never said, no, I ain't gonna do that. But I have, I have done that as a service to the town as a notary. Matter of fact, my notary expires this year, and I'll have to get it renewed again. Um, as mayor, I will have to do that. So, there's all kind of reasons why people come up here. And I've had people to ask me, well, are you, are you never around or the clerk never around? And I like saying, well, I don't know, you know? We can't, we can't just close the doors here anytime we want to and have people come up here and say, I want to come in here, I, I want to talk to the clerk, I want to talk to, to the mayor or whatever. To me, it's a full-time job. That is a full-time job, and, and my opinion is, we need, we need to be like any other business. We need to post the hours to say that from eight to five, like it's always been in the past, so people will know. When can they come up here? And yet, we're going to have to pay for that, and like we always have in the past, we've always paid a full-time, as a full-time job. That's my opinion about it. It ain't, it ain't how fast you can get the job done or what you, you know, sitting up here is nothing or whatever, because there are people that come up here, and if they know they can come up here, then they need to come up here, you know? They need to be able to know to come up here, as you expect. Back when, um, I'm going to go back to Pambau when she was here. She was here from eight to five, most time from 7:30 to five, you know? Um, our previous clerk was the same way, was here every day. Everybody knew they could come up here, that they could, and talk to the clerk. So it ain't got nothing to do with what, you know, us trying to save money by keeping the office closed. We just need a schedule. Does anybody disagree with what I just said?
I disagree, because we're thinking about, like, my Pam, that was, she left in 17, and things have changed since 2020. Um, and then even since Jeannie left, things have changed. We have Avenue now, and we, we don't have the court. And I guess my question is, what, why would somebody need to come?
Well, they come for all kind of reasons.
Like, boy, I mean, like, I don't ever need to come.
Well, y'all are not up here. I was, I was up here until a point in time. I was here every day.
So they come in for a notary and a fax machine?
Well, that and for other reasons. They come up here wanting to talk to, about, I need to talk to the police. Police may not be here, but they'll come in here and say...
But now, we put it out there when we didn't have our police force, you call the county if you need the Ranford police.
Well, you still do that today. You still have to call 911 if you want the police. That, that's just a given. That's, we don't have any other choice of doing that. But what I'm saying is that if they come in and they want to file a complaint or something like that, who do they go to? They go straight to that office right there. And they, they don't go back there to the police department. The clerk tells them, says, well, you got to talk to the police about that. But somebody got to be here. And if we just close the doors and don't have a schedule, that is just, that's wrong. It's not, it's not, it's not a service to our town. And it ain't no different if it's down here at the supermarket. We all know when they're going to be open, when they're going to close.
So what has made the difference between October and now? Retaliation?
No, it's not.
No, I get, I get at least one call a week saying, when the City Hall, will they be open?
So what is, what is, what do they need? Do they tell you what they need?
The notary was...
Well, she's not a notary.
But she needs to be.
She's next to be.
No.
I believe she's asked to be. Am I correct?
As you said, she's not a notary.
And all, all of our...
Does not require.
All of our previous clerks does that. People knew that they could come up here and get a, get something noted out.
She hasn't been a notary since, she wasn't a notary in October, and she's not one now. So I, my question is, what is the difference?
That's her choice, that's her choice. I'm just saying it's a service to the town. We've been doing that for years. That's the reason why I'm a notary. I didn't, you know...
You can be the, I mean, that's good.
Well, I am.
It's helpful.
It is helpful.
It's helpful. And I've never turned anybody down or like that or anything.
But do we need to...
But in the past, they've come up here and asked for a notary, they've asked a fax stuff. They can't do that now. Unless they come get, fight, run me down, you know? Because I'm not coming up here every day.
She does.
Not all the time.
But she comes up here every day.
But it's hard to know when she does, like we want Rodney to say.
She's making a long schedule.
Council don't even know.
That's the reason why we got to do an ordinance. That is, that is a rule. We got to do an ordinance.
But my question, Rodney, to you is, why is it just now, why are you just now, when she came in October, she told us that she needed these, she didn't call it flex, but she let us know that she wasn't going to be here all day, every day. She told us that, and it was fine, until y'all got sideways. And now that you two are sideways...
I never told her not to come up here.
I didn't say you told her not to come up here, don't change my words. It wasn't a problem of her not having set hours until now.
Well, that's because of now that I've looked into it, we're supposed to have set hours. That's what, that's the point I'm trying to make. We're supposed to have set hours. There's, you have to do an ordinance to do that. And you have to set time. Now, if you want to set it for, for that, to 20 hours or whatever, then that's, to me, that's, that's treating our town wrong.
To me, it's treating our town wrong to waste $20,000.
Well, it ain't wasting money. I mean, it's, we did, we did, you consider we wasting money with Pambau or, or...
But they were doing court, and they were doing more business licenses, and they were doing a lot more.
Yeah, but we need to know, we need to know that.
And we didn't have email, you know? The world is different now than it was, the world is completely different than it was when my Pam was here.
But they ain't, but everybody don't do email. Everybody don't have a computer. Everybody don't have, the people come up here for that kind of stuff, they, they looking for, they go down to the bank.
Well, we had the previous clerk before her. I was a vocal about this job didn't deserve for, not deserve, it didn't require 40 hours. She wasted 40, she wasted hours times before this job can be done in less than 40 hours effectively. It can be done. I have been through this town enough to know that 10 o'clock in the morning, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, you may not see a soul out here, and then you may see a few. That's in the past. I wrote through town, I wrote through town six times today, absolutely, and no one. Six times, absolutely no one. And I'm going to do it since I'm off during the summer, I'm going to keep track of it. But the thing is, this job does not require 40 hours.
Anymore.
Right.
At one point it did, before we eliminated the business licenses, eliminated the court, you know?
I think too, when you're at the seniors center, I mean, I know at times, Pambau would go in there, I don't know about Jeannie, but I know Pambau would go in there, help out at the seniors center. And now that you're not here, I mean, I, I don't know that they need help, you know?
Is there a way that you could put this person, put you on 20 hours a week and still pay insurance?
No.
Yeah, you just have to call it full-time, like, you would have...
No, you cannot, because, because full-time is 30, 32 hours.
It doesn't have to be though. Like, you can call anything you want to full-time. Anything you want to call full-time, you can call it full-time and say, for this job, 20 hours is full-time.
I disagree with that.
If we could get clarification on that, if you could set this job would require 20 hours a week and, and pay benefits with that, uh, insurance.
Just let me clarify. I mean, I'll get it in writing, I'll get the law...
I'll get in touch with the league and find out.
Well, ADP is who we need to talk to about labor laws, which is...
I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the, uh, league about that.
What the league is just saying that office hours are at the discretion of the municipal governing body.
We need to determine, can we, can we dictate as a, a council? Can we dictate that 20 hours is a full-time load for this position?
And you know what? If we can't, well then, let's not, let's not let that make be a deal breaker. But I prefer to have the insurance, but if we, if we can't say, just telling y'all, there's not 40 hours worth of work in there, sitting staring at the door is long gone. But if, if we can't offer 20 hours with insurance and it be a legal thing, I mean, we need to get it in writing, and I will figure that out, and if not, well then we come back to the table. We talk about, why don't we do anything illegal?
But we have to set a schedule.
I'll even go set a schedule tonight. I mean, we didn't know about this, and we sent, you got it sent to us, and, you know?
Yeah.
I think these are good conversations to have in moving forward and setting a schedule uh, for this, but I'd like to know some other questions first before, because if it is where we can pay insurance and this job is a 20-hour whatever, then I think we could set some schedules.
If we do that, we don't end up paying our, uh, driver.
No, you, you do it by job description. Everybody has a job description.
And saying, I've, I've talked to you about job descriptions, job descriptions since day one, and, no. So, you, each person has different ways, different descriptions of their jobs, responsibilities.
Yeah, you can do it by job description. I mean, I did it at my old job all the time. Just set things up however works.
I didn't know this was going to be a hot topic, you know, when I saw email, and I took my, my, the opportunity to talk to people down in Ronup, that's just people that I know grew up with. Um, and the question was asked, I talked to the mayor and I talked to the, the city clerk. And the city clerk said, well, how, how do we know, how do you know how to conduct business in the town, you know, I have set schedule? My idea, whether the set schedule is 20 hours or 40 hours, I don't care, or if it's 32 hours, I don't care. But we do need a set schedule, some type of a set schedule, where we can put it on the door, and if Grandma Taylor needs to come and say, hey, I'm, I'm going to be at the City Hall at 3 o'clock today, tell, you know, my uncle or what, have me to meet you there, for whatever reason, the door's going to be open. Now, I don't care if it's 20 hours, 40 hours, 32 hours, I don't care. We need some type of set schedule. And that's, you know, whether that looks like 4 hours a day, whether that's, whatever it is, that's what we need, I mean, my opinion, and the opinion of, you know, the people that I asked, and that's, that's just how I need to, to reach out to. Um, and that's, that's my two cents on that. Again, don't care if it's 20 hours, 40 hours, 32, whatever, 12, don't care, as long as it's safe.
Y'all, this meeting is going on and on and on.
So go back to that now. Am I, ADP, I'm going to get the clarification about the insurance. Is there anything else that y'all want me to look at or ask questions of so we can open it up for discussion again? That's it.
Okay. All right. So, going to the next thing, the last thing on the agenda. Is the council concerned with the Pam clerk? I have some concerns myself, uh, but, uh, I want the town, the council itself to be involved in this as well, about the way, what's going on in this town hall right now. I'm going to ask y'all, is there anybody that, um, that has any concerns? Now, I, I've sent y'all my concerns previously by email, told you what happened, told you how it was, and I even told you what, at, at perch and lead, you know, what I should do. So you got that, you got my, you got some of my concerns already, because y'all know what they are. But, you know, one of the things, and this, I'm just got, I've got a list of them or whatever, but, you know, like, if I need supplies, who, who does the clerk answer to? Does she answer to who for the council? How old the council?
I think that it's not who she answers to. I think it's the relationship that you held, that the relationship that you two held is so toxic that neither of you would do anything for e, either of you. I think with a different relationship, it wouldn't be a problem. But I think it's the relationship that you two held. You asking her to order supplies when you can go on and do it yourself is just poking the bear.
I couldn't do it myself. I didn't have the card, I didn't have the, the, how to get on to, uh, Amazon.
That problem's resolved.
Yeah.
That problem's solved, but at the same time, who screamed, man, told me to get away from her window?
Rodney, we have heard, we have heard the screaming at you for, I don't know, I'm beyond, I'm beyond hearing how every meeting since that altercation happened, it has been brought up.
Well, what, what have you said about it? What have you done about it? What do you think about it?
You know what? We got in an argument, did we not, with that? We sure did.
Might get another one. Are you okay?
What did we do Tuesday morning? We called each other.
Said, no problem.
You know what? When I went home at night, it didn't bother me one bit, because I knew that I was going to call her, she was going to call me. We worked it out, we said our sorrys, we went on, and we may argue again tomorrow.
It'll be okay, it's business.
But the thing is, we have heard that every meeting. Now, I don't know what to tell you at this point in time.
And honestly, guys, y'all haven't asked me, and I'm going to tell you right now it's not true.
What, what?
What not true?
Whatever you're telling about me yelling at you, I haven't yelled at you.
You both certainly did, and you know you did. Yeah, I brought that, as a matter of fact, I met that morning with, uh, Melissa Norton to get that signed.
Does any of that matter?
Yes, it does. It most definitely matters, because I walked up to that window and I said to you, I said, I've got this thing, and you said, get away from my window, you get over in your office, you're getting your office, don't you even speak to me? And I said, it's a matter of... And you said, I'm serious, get away from her, get away from my office. And so I did, and I went in there and immediately sent an email to the council. I got in touch with Chad Lee.
Rodney, just because you called Chad or sent an email out doesn't make it the truth. Just like you're, you haven't been able to see the camera since February. Of course you haven't, because I'm calling you out on it.
No, you don't. I have not seen, I cannot.
Okay, okay, you have, you can...
I mean, I, I know you...
I hear what you're saying.
I swear to God, I said, don't flatter yourself, because I'm not going to say you.
Okay.
Okay?
You sat here and admitted to the council that you didn't look at me.
But you told me to get away from your window, and you're sitting there saying, well, I can do that. Is that what you just said?
This is one question that I have also, or this is, like, finding the common denominator. The previous clerk yelled at you. The previous, the previous chief yelled at you. The previous senior citizen manager yelled at you.
Clay, Carl, we can go on and on. This is a pattern.
It's not a pattern. I tell you one thing, I can, I can vouch for this for myself. I have never tolerated anybody.
No, I'm not saying you're yelling at people.
That's right. But what I'm saying is, they're, they're yelling at me, what am I supposed to do, sit there and say, okay, that's fine, go ahead and do it? They came into my office, I told y'all what happened. I come down to your house and sat there and got emotional about it.
And for the record, hang on a second. It was said that I stood there and didn't do anything, and that I stood there and I didn't show any emotion. The truth is, I didn't stand anywhere. I got in the truck with you. I was sitting in the truck with you, telling you that it was going to be okay, it's going to be okay, because you were so upset. And you go and told people that I stood there and just listened to you and didn't show any kind of emotion. I've had numerous people tell me that, so I just want everybody to know, that wasn't the truth. In fact, I didn't stand at all, I sat in the truck with you. But what my que... But what my question is, is why do you think so many people are yelling at you?
Well, let's go back to, um, I don't know that, uh, I don't recall Cassandra ever yelling at me.
Well, you said the three of them cornered you in the office and all three of them raged at you.
But the only, but the ones that were screaming at me was Glenn, and I told y'all that. And nobody said a word, nobody said, well, that's, that's bad. Now, I talked to Dennis, I talked to Mitzi about it.
You sat in my yard and we talked about it for over an hour.
I know I did.
And I talked to you through it. I know, and I was helping you through it. I didn't sit there like a cold.
And then you turned right around and here you were talking to Glenn, talking to Jamie.
We're talking about people yelling at you.
That's right.
My question is, why do you think so many people yell at you?
Why, hey, listen, do you think I, do you think for a second that when I was cornered in that office in there, I had four people come in there, Glenn was doing all the screaming, nobody else screaming. I asked Jamie, standing in that door, I said, why don't you like me? Why don't you ever speak to her? And she said, I don't speak, you don't, I don't like you. They said they recorded me the next day, or the day after, day or two after. I was cornered again, right here again, screamed at again. You can fire me if you want to, the council just put me right back on. We recorded you. I said, who recorded me? No, and nobody would admit to it.
Where are we going with this right now?
Well, I'm just trying to make a point.
That point, but those, those folks are gone.
They are gone.
What's the point?
But she, she asked a question.
Okay, why are they yelling at you? That's the question. And you go back all the way to Glenn and Jamie and everybody else. Why? I can tell you why. It's because you sit here and you, you go about the ways that you do when you sit here and you, you try, people try to explain and it's this or that, and you just go beyond and on and on, and it's just, right, what's the concern here?
Whatsoever.
What's, what's the concern?
This is a concern to me too. I have found out that you were part of that. That you, when, when they came down here, you were talking on the phone with Glenn. When Barry came in that day, I know that. And, and Jenny, Jenny come back and even.
You know what? That is part of something that, like I just said, those, those folks are gone. I don't even have a clue.
Yeah, but you, but you were a part of it.
Right, you were the part of it too. Everyone sitting at this table was part of it, okay? This whole town was part of it.
But why did he, why did he come in there and say?
I don't want to go back to what Glenn and Jamie done tonight. I really don't. I don't really care.
But you, but what I'm saying is, you're trying to make it look like that it was my fault, because they came in and screamed at me. I'd like, I didn't scream at anybody, they come in there and did it, and I told them that.
I'm gonna be honest with you, what happened then, I try to forget, and I'm doing a pretty good job until I get reminded every meeting.
Well, I did.
I'm getting, I'm getting a very good job every thirty days of forgetting it, and then all of a sudden it's recanted back.
Yeah.
And I try not to. I try to move ahead. I'm not gonna try to live in the past. And right now, that's all we seem to be doing, is living in the past here.
Well, I've been accused of, why, I asked a question, you asked a question, why are they hollering at me? I'd like to know that too.
It's because of the way you manage, it is your management skills. It is the way you handle situations, it is the way you.
How would you, hey, Kristi, I want to ask you something. If you've been, you've been sitting in the office right there, and they came in and talked to you the way they did, they called me a liar? I'm just sitting there working on a doggone report for, for sam.gov. I'll never forgive it. It's something we have to do, we have our office. I was sitting there working on it. I was not expecting that. He came into my office and said, we fixing to have a powwow, and then here comes the other three. And they sat down and cornered me in that office right there. What if it had been you sitting there? What would, how would you have responded?
I would, first of all, would have hoped that I would have had a better relationship with my employees, so that it wouldn't come to a break. I would hope that I would have de-escalated them to the point that they would not have wanted to come in there and yell at me. And if they did, then I would have sat there, I would have taken it, I would have left, come back. I've had employees, I have employees that I've had disagreements with, not to the point of yelling. You disagree, you go on.
And the next day, what did they do? They told, they told Dennis that I had resigned. I had to call a special counsel lady and just say, that's ridiculous, I didn't resign. Who recorded me?
So what can we, what are you wanting to do about the camp, the concerns of the town clerk?
I want her to act like a town clerk and to be a town clerk, to do her job as a town clerk, not to be insubordinate. If I.
I don't disagree with her, because everything I've asked Sam to do for me, excuse me, she's done.
Well, you're not, hey, listen, you're not down here every day.
You're not even.
Well, I was.
Well, the thing is, is that every time now that, no, I don't, but I call and I communicate through text or email, and every time I've asked for something, it's there.
Is there anybody else that can say anything different?
I can't say, I can't say insubordination on my part.
Well, I can, because.
Okay, that, you're one of the six, so that's, that's okay.
And that goes back to the relationship.
Because you're not, because you're not here.
No, but when, I know I can, I agree, I agree with a hundred percent, alright? But when I do ask for things, she gets them for me.
Well, it might be you, but not for me.
Okay, me, she do it for you, Dennis?
I'm sure Sam asked her to do that.
Okay, that's right.
But if I do, do you get it?
All but that time.
She gets your stuff. You have been on, on enough to ask for something, yes, I don't know.
But why, why would she tell me no?
Because of y'all's relationship. Y'all don't have the relationship.
Well, I don't, well, let me tell you about that, about the relationship while we're on that. Samantha told somebody that she didn't like me the day before I was elected. She didn't like me, and she hasn't liked me since I was elected, and she still don't like me today. And that she would not compromise or be, you know, have, have an agreement, whatever. I've never said that. I've never, I have never said that, and I even told her I would do it. I told her, I said, I will speak to you anytime. No, it's, it's over for you. It's over.
Now, y'all, that don't even sound like something I'd say.
Oh, come on. You even said, sending out emails to everybody except me.
She was going by what you had requested.
But that, that's not what I said. I just said, I'm on this council too. I think she overlooked the fact that I'm on this council too. I'm the presiding officer of this council.
And it's a mayest.
And it is, because of what?
And it is a mayest.
Because, because she told me not to speak to her.
Now, it's a mayest.
It's been a mayest for a long time.
It was a mayest before she ever showed her.
And she, she was asked, she was asked, can you, can you, you know, have an agreement or something? I mean, what can you, can you compromise or something? No, I would never compromise.
This ungrace.
And then here we are, here we are, let's go back again. When she came through, when she called me, I didn't, I had not, I didn't really know Samantha on a personal basis, okay?
You don't know me personally now, so let's don't go there.
Well, I still don't, and I'm learning, I'm learning, but I am learning now, because from October, when she called me and said she wanted to come down here, I said, great, come on. She comes down here. It was hunky-dover, everything was lovely, we were talking about everything, and I was showing her what, what I knew, and all that stuff. And then about January, I saw the first thing, and I told y'all about that, about our, about our insurance thing, and what he said. And she was extremely ugly to him, and I witnessed that. Daniel was down there, he witnessed it. And he told me, he said, I will not come back to the town of Ramory if, if I got anything to hurt.
I saved y'all four thousand dollars, cause I was very direct, very direct, saved you four thousand dollars. Rodney was sitting there, ready to sign the papers, and I said, whoa, whoa, whoa. Now, we were insuring the bleachers, we were insuring for the rec department, which we were not supposed to be doing, canceled all that.
Well, then I agreed with all of that. I sat there and agreed with you on that.
But after, I had to get direct with him. I had to say, no, 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 no. I'll go back and show you all the notes.
Yeah, but if you listen to the way she talked to him, I, you had to have been here.
He works for us.
Very rude. And he told me, he says, I will not come back to Ramory, I will not. And he, he is an agent for AMIC. AMIC is the one that sells insurance on behalf of all the municipalities in Alabama. And so, and so he, he told me, he said, I told, he said, I told my people at AMIC, I will not go back up there. So what I'm saying is, I'm just making a point here, that I saw this behavior. It went from great from October, and I, I was like, I don't understand what people were saying, because we were really having, we were exchanging emails and about scriptures and that kind of stuff, and I thought it was all great. And then, and I saw that the first time then, and then it, and it sort of escalated over a period of time. Because, make a statement, we don't need that lawyer up here. I said, well, I'm having Chad Luke come, we don't need a lawyer up here, I don't need any protection, I don't need this.
Because you used that sentence, and you said, I'm having him here for yours and my protection. I said, well, don't have him here for my protection, I don't need him for anybody.
Because he's here for our town, he is our town's attorney.
So what are we gonna do to get this solved?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what we're gonna do, because I'm not, I'm still not clear about who she answers to. Because typically, she's supposed to answer to me as her supervisor. But she will not do anything I say.
The relationship.
Well, the relationship, I can do, I'll do whatever needs to be done. I will do that. I will meet with her, I will talk to her, we can talk it out. I would hope it would go back to like it was before, but she's done made it clear to somebody else that I didn't like him from day one. Well, why didn't you come down here then?
It wasn't for you, it was for my town. I love this town.
Well, but how would you come through the door and tell me that you, that, oh, I love you, I love your family, all this kind of stuff, and then all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you just changed, and it's because of your behavior.
And I do love your family. I've loved them my whole life. You can't change it.
Can we agree that, like, I understand, I've, I've had to work with people that I didn't like for years.
We all have.
And that, that's fine, but you, we gotta work, the working relationship, like, the emails, but, and everybody, the communications, we gotta, we gotta be all on the same page.
I agree.
But she's not been sending me any mail.
As far as like, understanding their certain feelings and all this, that.
I have no feelings for her.
We, we really need to go, going forward, everybody be on the same page with town business.
Do I have your permission to walk up to your, to your, to get, to, to give you something or send you something?
So now let's go back to what I told you, in the beginning, or you guys, I'm, I'm, I'm not meaning you, Josh, I'm meaning you guys. In, in the beginning, when y'all, you know, when I was doing my report, one hundred percent, I'm here to fix this situation. But we have got to address the stalking me, we have got to address the retaliation, and we have got to address those issues that we all talked about. We just have to, we got to sit in the room and talk about it out loud, and so that he understands there are boundaries. And we have got to adhere to those, and that's all I'm asking. Beyond that.
I'm not gonna, I do not look at you on the day come camera. It hadn't worked on my phone since February, and that's true.
But you said right here earlier in the meeting and told the council, anybody didn't hear that?
He just watched your car and he's at home. He said Samantha's up there, I'm gonna run up there and work Samantha.
And I could see your car, so now, I wasn't looking at you, I don't care to look at you.
Okay.
Samantha, will you, starting tomorrow, will you answer his emails and his texts?
As soon as you guys sit down, and we all are on the same page.
No, no, I am on this council.
As soon.
I am a member of this council. You, you are sending, I can send you, I send you emails all the time. I send it to you and the council, every time. What do you do? You take my email and turn around and respond back to them.
You asked to have no responsibility where I was concerned. I was doing what you asked.
No, you did, you did, you were not doing what you, what I asked.
Yes.
I said the council was, Samantha, what you're missing out on, I'm on the plastic council.
But you didn't say that in that.
Well, I mean, that's your opinion, but that's, but that's not, that's not what I said.
It's not my opinion. You put it down in writing and handed it to everybody at this table.
I said that she's gonna have to say it to the council, and I'm on the council. That's what I, that's what you don't get. You don't get it. I'm on the darn council, and you're just.
You haven't voted until tonight.
It's a deliberate, it's a deliberate action on your part.
If, guys, if we can sit down and just be open and honest, and just put that little bit of buffer, so you guys look at him and under, and make it clear, none of this retaliation, none of this stalking her, none of this, I, I, I mean, if you guys can make that clear.
I don't appreciate it being accused of stalking you, because I'm not stalking you, and you've said that several times now. That is harassment on my part. My goodness, you.
But anyway, if you guys can sit down and we can just openly, honestly say, okay, this is the situation, this is what occurred, has occurred, y'all, I've got facts, I've got paperwork, whatever y'all need. I'll, I won't say anything that I can't back up. Then we'll, we'll move forward. Y'all just make it clear, because there has to be a buffer between, for now. And then we'll just move right on forward, if y'all will just make it clear. Is that fair enough?
Am I, am I allowed to come back to your window? You're the one that told me not to get to get away from that window.
But I didn't, but I did.
You both certainly did, and you know you did.
Well, I didn't, so yes, come right on back to the window, but let's make sure, guys, we have got to address that before you put me in that situation again.
Because I even sent out an email to the council about what you did.
Well, that made it true.
Well, it's true. It's exactly what happened, and you know it's what happened. You're sitting there saying, oh, I didn't do that. You both certainly did. You know you did. I wouldn't went in there, do you think I'd have went in there and sat down and wrote a darn email if that hadn't happened?
Do you think I would have told you looking at the camera unless you told me, or all the police officers saying, my god, Samantha, what did you on that camera? He pulls in just like, anyway, it's okay. Let's just talk about it, guys. Let's just sit down, we'll talk about it. Just make sure it's clear that Samantha has some little bit of a box, a little bit of a boundary, you know, as an employee, as you guys employee. I should be able to come to you guys and say, this is unacceptable behavior. And I did that, guys. I went through the proper steps.
And I did too, Samantha. I went through the proper steps.
You're the employee, I'm the employer.
You're the employee, yes, and, and exactly, and I told the council what happened.
But it wasn't the truth.
Well, it is the truth, and you sitting there saying that, and you, Samantha, I don't see how you can live with yourself saying that. You know.
But I'm open, guys, if you.
Guys, I think we're getting way further away from where we're at. We, it, it boils down to, we got to have communications between each town.
Yes, I mean, anybody can.
And I think everybody can agree with that. Now, as far as like cameras and all that stuff, it was, I, I don't know where that stands, don't know any of the, I know how I handled it at Southwire with my people, was if something happened, I looked at the cameras. The only time I ever looked at cameras was if something happened.
And I got no problem with that.
The, now, as far as the, and that was, cause a lot of people had those same, same concerns. Uh, but sitting and fussing back and forth is not, like, everybody hears, like.
I just want to be able to be like it was before. I sat down in there and talked to her for three months. Everything was hunky-dover, everything was great. And all of a sudden, it's like, she was sending out emails to y'all about the ordinance. She sent out about, I think the ordinance means this right here. And I said, no, that's what it said. Oh, yes, that's what it said.
We went through the same thing.
And we went through that.
We went through the same thing with Gene, Josh, that you.
We went through the same thing with Jean, Josh, that you, we've been through this already.
Not really. Wait, wait a minute. What are you talking about?
About you and Jean got along really well to begin with, and then y'all got sideways and then.
And there was a reason for that too. And you know what, and you know what it is too.
I'm just saying that it's been.
And then did bother you.
This is the second one.
This is the second.
You make it, you make it sound like that I'm the bad guy. But I'm not. I have never hollered at anybody.
I didn't ever say you hollered at anybody.
Well.
I've never said that.
Well, they hollered at me.
We're, we're not getting this resolved tonight. So what we gotta do, we either gonna have to sit down, we have to schedule something and talk about it as a group because.
Okay, who does she answer to for the next?
She answers to the council, does she not? Rodney's part of the council.
Yes, and I am, I am supposedly the supervisor in any other town, the clerk answers to the mayor. That's just a given. But the way it is now, and that's what Chad Lake tried to tell y'all. If she don't answer, if she doesn't do what I asked her to do, like, ordinance, that blame.
That's, we got that problem solved. You get you any, you got it.
Thank God, thank God. I don't want to put it on my credit card no more. That has to wait to be reimbursed. I probably won't get reimbursed until, that's another thing about the, the payment. The payment, uh, I mean, that's paying bills on a town, the family, man. I personally, in the past, I think we talked, any time we ever got a bill, we paid it. Because it's just reoccurring bills. Now, if it's something out of the ordinary, yes, it would come before the council to do that.
Are we late on bills?
It was.
Are we late on any?
Well, we have been.
Okay, but we're not now, right? Like I said, we ain't held that past.
Well, our, our. But what I'm saying is, if we waited two weeks to pay people.
Are we late on any bills?
No.
We're not late.
Well, people are staying.
Are we late, Rodney?
Yes, well, people.
Yes or no?
Yes, we are. I'm just saying.
Who are we, who are we late paying a bill to?
If, if somebody.
Who?
If we pay a bill, okay.
Who?
Art, for example.
No, no, no. Who, Rodney? Who are we late paying a bill to?
Right now.
Right now?
Right now.
Right now, no one. No one right now.
I don't know, 'cause she's gonna tell.
And if you don't know, Rodney, why are we bringing it up? If I don't know something, I'm, I'm not gonna sit there and waste time and say that it should be paid, it shouldn't be paid. It should have been, you know, ten years ago, paid it this way. When I first came on the council, we paid them immediately. We're paying them twice a month. If anyone's late, let us know. And we'll get it handled.
Yeah, it is a concern. It is a concern.
I haven't seen anything in any of these documents saying that people are not being paid. No one in the town has come up to me. We've not had a bill that says, you know, any late fee. Everything's pretty much consistent, like you said. It's, it's pretty much a cycle. So nothing is, is late. I mean, how many bills do we actually pay?
Well, see, we don't know, we don't know what she's doing.
Yeah, you do, it's all.
She pays what she wants to.
They're getting paid twice a month.
Twice a month, but if you turn in a bill or something or other, you won't get paid. What's, what is wrong? Like it has been in the past, it ain't no big deal to make a check. It's no big deal, I mean.
How many times did you pay a month, Mitzi?
Hmm, I, two, three times.
See, right now, I'm counting that holiday with, you know, it's been fifteen days. Sam, I agree with that.
Trevor, I'm gonna.
But there's a. My day would have been fourteen days.
The thirty, when's the thirty? Thirty is Thursday. Everything will go out on the thirtieth.
Trevor, I'm gonna.
Fifteen days into it since you last paid.
Yeah, but I'm just, like, fifteenth and thirtieth. I'll pay him. Honestly, I was gonna try to write something today and I just didn't get to it. But I definitely will do it by the thirtieth. For sure.
And if, if anybody says anything, it has been in the past. We know that. Y'all know that. There hasn't been concern about that. People called, what, why haven't been paid on this?
Has there been any since I've been here?
Yes, the car, paying me? You, you just withheld paying for over a month.
I couldn't pay the car because you didn't have it approved by the council, and I had to wait till they approved it. But I told you that before you left here. That's when it all started. Because I said, don't do that without just with the council. I'll be a authority.
I had to make, I had to make an exact decision because Tasha told us, we had to have a vehicle. Samantha said, when I told her, I said, I'm going up there to look at that vehicle, man, for a little bit better. I said, well, we, we're going up there to look at it. And she said, we don't need another vehicle. We, we most early did need another vehicle.
What I said was, have you let the council know? We were in the middle of discussing ways to better improve the senior citizen situation that we're spending a hundred thousand dollars down there. We're looking at.
That's not true either. That's not true.
How much are we spending?
It's between, it's between sixty-five thousand dollars. Because what she's spending to us, boy, she's like putting in the insurance. You know, things that, we're paying annually. We pay, we pay the insurance annually out of the general fund for everything, you know.
Well, but part of, if it's. Part of it is the senior center. It should be split out.